All right. The mayor will be presenting the following. Starting out with recognizing Diego Ramirez for steeple chase qualifications to complete the Nike Outdoor Nationals in Eugene, Oregon on June 15, 2023. Diego.
Hi, good afternoon. I want to introduce myself first. My name is Diego Ramirez. I am a track and cross-country runner at United High School, class 2024. I run for the running club, RXC. I want to thank everybody today for coming out to support my recognition of this memorable award. I want to thank my family for always being by my side, my dad Enrique, my mom Veronica, as well as to my brothers, Giga and Andy, for always being there and supporting me from day one. They have been a huge inspiration towards my running career, starting with my mother, always correcting all my mistakes, helping me to be the best version of myself. To my dad, always being there for me and loving me no matter what the outcome is. To my brothers that have inspired and motivated me very early on in life. They have taught me to fight through pain because pain is only temporary and quitting is forever. They are true athletes, which takes a lot of mental toughness and crazy endurance, which has made me do the same in running. I want to thank all my coaches, Coach Rangel, Coach Calderon, Coach Trevino, and all the coaches that have made an impact in my running career since the first grade. Every coach has made a different impact on this running journey of mine. I am a two-time All-American in the Steeple Chase and a seven-time national qualifier. If it wasn't because of Coach Rangel, I would not be here where I am today. Thanks to him and my hard work and lonely hours of running with a lot of dedication to the sport, I have been fortunate enough to compete at the highest levels of competitions in the United States. I am excited for the years to come and pushing forward and hopefully inspiring others to run as well. Thank you to the great city of Laredo and thank you, Dr. Trevino, for the recognition and support.
All right. Recognizing Miki Caso for his recent podium achievements at the 2023 Clash of the Titans Track Meet and other running achievements. Miki Caso.
All right. I didn't really write a speech, but I just want to start by thanking God because without God, I wouldn't be where I am today. He's guided me through a lot, through injuries, through mental breakdowns, but I just want to thank Him first. And second, I want to thank the mayor for allowing me to be here today in this recognition. So, thank you to him. And then third, I want to thank all my coaches. Without them, I also couldn't be here today. So, I want to thank Coach Rangel, my Alexander coaches, Louis Mendoza and Daniel Lombraña. They pushed me every day to work hard, so without them, I also wouldn't be here. And then last, I want to thank my parents because without my mom and my dad pushing me every night to run, I just wouldn't be where I am today. So, I'm going to keep making this city proud and thank you.
That was better than the prepared speech, huh? All right. Recognizing Rosella Newman as a local author and contribution to the advancement of literacy and youth through her children's books. Rosella, come on down.
I'm Rosella Newman. I'm a local author on children's books and I promote the books for literacy and I really enjoy reading to the children, going to different book signings. The main character of most of my books is my Chihuahua dog, Moka, and the kids are so happy when I take her to the schools for book signings. It's wonderful reading to children. They really enjoy it. I think we ought to try to do more of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is the latest book. Planet Zero. The kids are going to love this story.
Is that age group?
About, what is it, about like seven-year-old kids, children, yeah? Yeah, up to 12, I would say.
All right, let's get a picture.
Are there repetitions?
Okay.
I'd like just everybody to know that she's my aunt. She's my father's sister, Rosella Newman is, and she's just such an inspiration when it comes to children here in the city of Laredo. I've gotten calls from several schools that she goes to when she's out there at the library. When she reads to the children, it really opens their eyes, makes them see the world in a different place. Specifically, when it comes to Moka, I hear about him all the time. So, wonderful, wonderful dog from those books that I've read myself. I just want to say thank you. You're an inspiration to a lot of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you and I forgot to thank my family for being here. Thank you very much. And Robert for being here too. Thank you.
All right.
We're going to take that picture.
Picture?
Here.
It was Mikey, right? Sorry for that. All right. Recognizing for the Laredo Rizards, Laredo Traveling Ice Hockey Team for recent back-to-back championships in San Antonio and Houston area. Laredo Rizards. Let's go in the back so we can take a picture.
So, what I understand about the Laredo Rizards is that they have won these championships. They practice at Troutman International Park. You might wonder how an ice hockey team practices at Troutman International Park. They do it on rollerblades and even then they're able to win a championship too. That's amazing. So, the inspiration of the Laredo Bucks continues and we're so happy that they're so dynamic and such great representatives of the spirit of Laredo.
Ah, it's done. Ah, it's done. Perfect. Okay, listos? One photo per acá. Una, dos. One, two. Listas.
All right, thank you. Anybody want to say words? The spokesman.
So, we've gone ahead, we took initiative and we started a nonprofit. We're called the Laredo Hockey Association and our goal is to start spreading awareness of just the sport of hockey in general. So, we want to start going to local elementary schools and start supplying schools with the resources they need to start playing hockey so kids can start experiencing what all of us experienced when we were younger. So, that's what we want to do and that's what we want to accomplish. So, thank you.
All right. All right. Recognizing Hillside Funeral Home employees for being recognized at the Texas Funeral Directors Association, South Texas Region Conference held in May 2023rd in Corpus Christi, Texas. Come on down.
So, we're grateful to be a part of the community and we thank our community's support and leaders from Hillside Funeral Home and Gamas Funeral Home. We recognize him as the funeral director of the year for our region and myself as a young professional funeral director of the year and we're just bringing light to the importance of education in the funeral industry in our community and helping build up our Hillside Funeral Home and Gamas Funeral Home, supporting our local youth, our local chapters, and just bringing Laredo to positive light.
Just a few words on a personal level. I've worked with these two gentlemen. As you all know, I work with the funeral industry as well and I've worked with them for 12 to 15 years approximately through different funeral homes that they've been at and they own their own now. But they are phenomenal when it comes to serving the public, when it comes to serving people that are in need at that particular time. These two are exemplary when it comes to their work and they're always there with the families. I know because my families have been with them as well in those times of need. Phenomenal people, not a better way to say, and congratulate you both. Thank you all for everything.
Thank you very much. Let's get a picture. Call to order, City Council meeting. It is June 20, 2023rd, 5:30 PM, City Council chambers. I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go on the side, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Mayor Victor D. Trevino.
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Daisy Cantor Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilwoman Melissa Cigarroa.
Present.
Councilmember Roberto Tellez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Ruben Gutiérrez Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. David Tyler King.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanessa Pérez. Councilmember Alyssa Cigarroa. Mayor, you have a corn.
Thank you. Move on to minutes, approval of minutes made.
No move.
Second. Motion second, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion pass.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to move, wait for citizens' comments till 5:45 and give the public those extra seven minutes left for them to sign up and move up recognition on the supplemental agenda. That's my motion.
Second, that motion. Second, on favor.
Aye.
Motion pass. Nobody against it. Recognition of Mr. Roberto Tellez on his recent election as the state director for LULAC and recognizing LULAC 12 for all their accomplishments, efforts, and community service throughout the years.
It'll pick it up.
I'll pick it up. Thank you all.
Mr. Tellez was born in Laredo, Texas. Roberto graduated from Alexander High School before starting his academic journey. He has pursued his passion for politics and obtained a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science, complemented by minor in Communications from the University of Texas A&amp;M International University. He is the proud owner of T Strategies, a business specializing in political communications and business marketing. Roberto has served in various Webb County and City of Laredo government boards. In 2014, became a member of the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, and became vice president of membership in 2017. He was also elected as the deputy district director for District 14 in the same year and in 2018, Roberto was elected district director, then was elected as deputy state director from 2019 to 2023. In 2023, he was elected as a state director for the Texas LULAC. This prestigious role places him in the forefront of guiding and overseeing LULAC's initiatives and activities throughout the state. Give him a hand of applause.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for this recognition. I want to thank my father and our other council 12 members, our president, Albert Trevino, my chief of staff, Amanda Chapa, they're here joining us as well, and I just want to thank, extend my gratitude and thanks for this recognition. And again, I look forward to serving at the state level of LULAC and I look forward to serving and representing not just council 12, not just Laredo, but all of Texas. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
One more here. One, two.
One with a down nail with us.
One, two. Okay, one, two.
We go back to citizen comments or do you want to move up items? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move up item 35.
Motion? Second. Second, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion pass.
Could the secretary recognize the arrival of council member Alyssa Cigarroa, please?
So, noted.
Noted.
Item 35. Authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into license agreement between the City of Laredo and U.S. Customs and Border Patrol Protection Department, CBP, for the construction, maintenance, and repair of a private roadway on properties owned by the City of Laredo located near the Rio Grande River. The license term is indefinite, subject to availability of the city to revoke the license at any time upon 60-day notice to CBP.
Good evening, Mayor John Porter, Environmental and Solid Waste Services. 35, we did get a revision from Border Patrol and staff has reviewed it and I think city management and staff and legal are happy with it and we think that it covers the areas that council had requested.
Motion to approve item 35? Motion?
Second for discussion. Mr. Porters, is the revision was included in the package of information?
I don't, I know that the city manager had sent it to council on Thursday morning.
Okay. This is the same one?
It's the same one, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. I think of note is that this agreement has a 14-day approval process for any concerns in the construction documents. Have those yet been presented to the city?
It's 15 days and no, they haven't submitted the documents.
Okay. I had a discussion with Mr. Neb and he assured me that you and Mr. Chavez and staff were ready to review the construction documents, make sure that they still preserve the ability of the city to work on the lands that have already been designated as areas of development for the city and to protect the city's interests. So, I think the city's done a great job in preparing for it and very happy with your work and thankful that the city will have oversight to make sure these very sensitive lands are well taken care of.
All right. Motion, call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. 35, see.
You want to bring that up?
Yeah, let's bring 35, see.
So moved.
Motion, second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
C1.
C1.
Oh, that's an item I sponsored, Mayor.
Mayor?
Sorry, 35?
Okay, we also bring up item number 57.
I'd like to make a motion to bring item 57 after C1, Mayor.
Second. Motion, second, on favor?
57?
57.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Mayor, item C1 is discussion with possible action to reschedule the Monday, July 17, 2023 regular city council meeting to Monday, July 31st, 2023 and any other matters incident. There are two, co-sponsored by Mayor Victor Trevino, Mayor Pro Tem Vanessa Pérez, and Councilmember Ruben Gutiérrez Jr. In conversations with management, we discussed this rescheduling and I'd like to make a motion to approve the item as read into the record.
Second. Motion, second.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My concern with postponing a meeting that we're already having a doubling up because we're not having an early July meeting. If we postponed it another two weeks, then we have about five weeks of items that fall on one meeting. And unless we can, I think, assure the public that we'll be meeting for two meetings because of the amount of work, it concerns me that we're going to leave the month of July, practically speaking, without a meeting. I think, I know July is a month, many staff, many directors take vacations, but I think the work of the city can continue. We can have, if we just have a quorum to review city business and make sure that we're not missing any deadlines, I think that's preferable to having the month of July without a sufficient council meeting.
Mayor Madre.
Go ahead.
So, we are having a council meeting in July, which is July 31st. Saying that we're not practically having a meeting in July is inaccurate. I did discuss this with the deputy city manager along with Mr. Neb and management supports moving the meeting in order to facilitate staff and directors if they won't be here for the month of July. This is not the first time we've done this. The month of July, because of the Fourth of July, one meeting is already postponed. Additionally, I believe that this change doesn't affect city business after management has already clarified that and the other meetings that have been scheduled do comply with the deadlines set forth. So, that is the motion I've put on the floor, Mayor.
Motion? Are you second?
I second.
I'm second. Go ahead.
What happened to our strategic planning session meeting?
It is scheduled for July 25th.
No, 24 and 25.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Does management think that we have any business that we should be taking care of before the strategic planning?
So, Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I may, we've checked with planning and zoning and so we asked if there was any items that were crucial. If, at this point, there is none, if there are to be any, we are ready for a new meeting to be able to work through it. What we do- What we do have is item number fifty-seven, where we have some target dates that we must shoot for, because if we're delaying it, then we would submit the budget on the thirty-first at five o'clock, and that's just the submission of the budget, but then we have some days that we need to count on, and we cannot go past budget workshops August the eighth and the eleventh. So if we commit to doing it on the thirty-first, we must commit also to doing the budget workshops during August eighth through the eleventh, or we can go to the twelfth if we have to, but that week of the eighth.
Of the eighth.
Is that, is that a usual, if we were to have a usual July meeting in mid-month, then what would be the usual schedule?
The usual schedule for our budget workshops would be anywhere between the first and second week of August, and so this would be the drop-dead deadline between the number of days that we would have to have.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Go ahead.
I did want to note that actually, for the budget workshop, I'm assuming you all are being extra cautious by proposing four days, but typically we do budget between two days or three at the most, so
That's correct.
the schedule does seem to be doable.
That's correct.
Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion to also approve item number fifty-seven as requested by staff.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Let's get citizens' comments, Juan Carlos Merca. Juan Carlos Merca.
Merla?
He was, but
He was here. I saw him.
Let's jump to Jesús González.
Muy buenas tardes, señor mayor de la ciudad, Dr. Victor Trevino, miembros del concilio, damas y caballeros que están en esta junta. Lamentablemente es la segunda vez que acudo aquí y son a presentar quejas. Ojalá y la siguiente vez que venga sea alguna felicitación. Me están obstruyendo en mi trabajo y a la vez a la ciudad, que no puede cobrar impuestos, ya que en la manzana, en una manzana de la ciudad, hay seis lotes en la calle, en la avenida Sidar. En uno de ellos, el lote número uno, tiene una construcción. El lote dos y tres quieren construir dos casas, pero no hay drenaje por la calle Sidar. Fui a la ciudad y me dicen que tendrían que construir, las personas que quieran hacer esas casas, que tendrían que poner el drenaje por la calle Sidar, lo cual yo lo veo injusto. Lo veo injusto porque en la misma manzana, en los lotes cuatro, cinco, y seis, usan el Ismen Line, que es una línea de seis pies de ancho, y aquí traigo los planos que muestran esas condiciones. Les voy a proporcionar aquí un juego de planos, aquí se los voy a dejar, pero yo veo que nos están obstruyendo porque yo tengo necesidad de trabajar y no puedo hacer esas casas o los planos de esas casas porque no les dan el permiso de construir ahí, a menos de que pongan el drenaje en la calle Sidar, lo que yo veo que es injusto, porque si los lotes cuatro, cinco, y seis usan el Ismen Line para el drenaje y el agua, ¿por qué en los lotes tres y dos no se puede hacer lo mismo? Yo veo que eso está injusto. Precisamente, el Ismen Line es para construir drenaje, agua, luz, inclusive gas, si es necesario. Entonces, yo veo que esto está siendo injusto. Por lo tanto, pues estoy presentando esta queja aquí en la ciudad. Yo fui al Departamento de Obras Públicas y me mandaron a que viera un ingeniero en donde tienen los servicios en la calle cincuenta y ocho, dieciséis, Dogger Avenue. Fui hasta allá y me atendió un ingeniero Gutierrez y me dijo, no, ahí nunca le vamos a dar servicio por el Ismen Line, tiene que ser por la calle. No veo por qué tenga que ser así, entonces, ¿qué caso tiene que tengan un Ismen Line al final de los terrenos? Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you. May we get Mr. Olly Navarro to give us some comments, sir?
Mayor, so these are public comments, but we'll have our building department go ahead and address it with him, right outside right now.
All right, we could do that. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Richard Rosas, public comment?
Until the item, until the item, number thirty.
Oh, we'll wait for the item on thirty. Juan Carlos Merca, is he here? That's it. Okay. We'll proceed. Motion to approve appointments, one through seven. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, would council consider opening items, public hearings, one through eight?
Motion, open a public hearing.
At this time for the annexations only, and then we'll do the rest.
Do the rest, sir. Okay. Councilwoman Vanessa Perez, first. All right. Motion, open a public hearings, one through eight?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Public hearing number one is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation of the initial zoning of R-1MH, Single Family Manufacturing Housing District, on a tract of land totaling forty-two point eighty-seven acres, more or less, and described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Eight, AFW Investments Two Track, located north of State Highway three fifty-nine and west of Wawi Teherina Parkway. Planning and zoning commission recommendations shall be provided the day of the meeting. Staff supports the application and the initial zoning. Public hearing number two is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation and the initial zoning of R-1A, Single Family Reduced Area District, on a tract of land totaling three hundred and sixty-seven point ninety-nine, more or less, acres, more or less, as described in the meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track One, Gun Two Track, located east of Cuatro Vientos Boulevard and south of Wormser Road. Planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of the annexation and the initial zoning. Staff supports the application and the initial zoning. Public hearing number three is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation of the initial zoning of M-one Light Manufacturing District, on a tract of land totaling sixty point sixteen acres, more or less, as described in meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Two, SKG Columbia One Track, located north of State Highway two fifty-five and west of FM fourteen seventy-two. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation and the initial zoning. Staff supports the application and initial zoning. Public hearing number four is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M-one Light Manufacturing District, on the tract of land totaling thirty-one point eleven acres, more or less, as described in meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Three, SKG Columbia Two Track, located south of State Highway two fifty-five and west of FM fourteen seventy-two. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation and the initial zoning. Staff supports the application and initial zoning. Public hearing number, number five is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation and the initial zoning of M-one Light Manufacturing District, on a tract of land totaling point zero fifty-eight acres, more or less, as described in meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Four, Nava Track, located south of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Coal Mines Road, Coal Mine Road. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of proposed annexation and initial zoning. Staff supports the application and initial zoning. Public hearing number six is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M-one, of M-one Light Manufacturing District, on a tract of land totaling three hundred and three point zero two acres, more or less, as described in meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Five, Needmore Dolores Track, located north of State Highway two fifty-five and east of FM fourteen seventy-two. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation and initial zoning except for the zoning along the frontage area of State Highway two fifty-five. Staff supports the application and initial zoning except for the zoning along the frontage area of State Highway two fifty-five. Planning and zoning, public hearing number seven is a public hearing and discussion of voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M-one Light Manufacturing District, on a tract of land totaling one point zero three one seven acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, known as Annexation Track Six, Gilpin Track, located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Vidal Cantú Road. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation and initial zoning. Staff supports the application and initial zoning. Public hearing number eight is a public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M-one Light Manufacturing District, on the tract of land, on a tract of land totaling three hundred and seventy-three point zero nine seven four acre, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Seven, Pinnacle Mines Investment Track, located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Vidal Cantú Road. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation and initial zoning. Staff supports the application and initial zoning. These are public hearings. Mayor? There is an update for item number, public hearing number one, the planning zoning approved.
Correct, the recommended approval.
The recommended approval of the initial annexation and zoning.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the city council. For the record, I filed with the Department, and I'll run through these items here pretty quick. Just as an informational note, this, these public hearings are just bringing them forward to advise the public and the city council that these are the annexations that are coming forward. This is not, this is just an item informational, it's not an item to take action. All right, first of all, the annexation tract, item number one, which is annexation track eight, the applicant is Patrick Farrell, AFW Investments Two Track Limited. The engineer of record is Sherif Engineering. The proposed use is single-family manufactured housing, and the proposed initial zoning is R-one MH. General location? Street view? Notification? Aerial view? Zoning map? Future land use? Survey of the area? And the recommendation, as was updated, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval, as well as staff. And just for an informative, Councilwoman Cigarro, you might have remembered this one, this did come last cycle, but the applicant withdrew their application because they don't want to come back with a different zone, just for information. You might, this might pick your memory a little bit. Okay, okay, thank you. Next item is item number two. The applicant is Vidal Cantú Junior, family management. Engineer of record is Polisense Engineering. The proposed use is a single-family residential, residential, and the proposed initial zoning is R-one A. General location? Street view? Notification map? Aerial view? Zoning? Future land use? Proposed draft layout? And the recommendations from PNC. Item number three?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, are we going to be approving these or asking for four again?
Just the action taken, closing a public hearing, that's all that's required.
It's up to you, I can continue if you like, I can
I guess you can also
Can we do them each individually, so that
It's up to council.
Whatever you'd like to do. So, but we're just closing, right?
It's going to be just a closing of public hearing.
May I like to make a motion to
If council has questions on an item and don't want to approve it or whatever, then it's up to you all to take action.
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing number one. So you can just take them one at a time?
Okay, motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And I'll make a motion to approve public, to close, I'm sorry, public hearing number two.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
No, I think he needs to, like, read into the record the information, and then we close, right?
It's already been read.
It's already been read to the record. So the information he's giving us
It's just information, information, if you like it.
Addition to you if you like.
Second.
Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
You don't have to, it's up to council, whatever you all want to.
Mayor, may I?
Wait, we don't have to go them all one at a time, we can just call them.
You can approve all of them?
Make a motion to approve four through eight as read into the record.
Yes.
If I make
Unless we have, we have a question on one.
There is an informative update that I would like to give on one of the items, and that is item number six, which is annexation track five.
Removing six. Motion?
Second.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
So the point of going through this is so that the public has an idea of the lands that are going to be annexed by the city?
That is correct, that is the purpose of this item. Again, it's not an item for council to take action, it's just, this is an announcement, bring it forward for the public.
Yes.
Go ahead, who was asking?
Mayor, in addition, on the following meeting, when we have it, we'll tell you exactly what will have to happen as far as infrastructure needs, costs, for cost of service, for police and fire and utility services and all that information. This is, again, just a public hearing. The following one will be providing you additional information once we have the sewer master plan and some other information from our departments.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Could we go ahead and just let them give the information to the public while we're here? There are people online watching, and it doesn't seem to be taking too much time.
We have a motion that
I'll, I'll speed it up, I'll speed it up, if you like.
We have a motion, but second.
We have a motion on the floor.
Hold on a second.
Go ahead.
So, I noticed a lot of these annexations are coming in, into District Seven, and so there's concerns with annexation costs and resources. I don't know why all of that isn't considered at the approval phase versus here, because this is kind of like the last stop in the process.
This is the first.
This is the first. They brought the annexation application, and then there was an approval and a support from the commission.
We did the same thing with them, we showed it to them, but annexation is going to be approved by council, so we're going to come, this is opening for public hearing, then we'll come back with some numbers, but you'll have three, three opportunities to look at it, and then either to approve it or deny.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Mayor, then I think we should just open them, since they're going to bring back the details.
That is correct.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, but second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Flagging you? Yes, okay. Item number three, the applicant is Sharon Caleri, SKG Columbia.
Clarification, Mayor.
It was fourth.
Number six.
Excluding number six.
Correct. Now, let's go to number six.
Absolutely. So, for number six, I did, just want to make a quick clarification, and let me run it through here real quick. So, on item number six, the applicant was Steve Lamantilla of Niñor Dolores, engineer of record KCI Technologies, and the proposed use is light industrial. General location?
What's the correction, Mayor?
The, pardon, my fault. The informative is that we are currently working with the landowner, they had initially requested an initial zoning of M-one, so staff has been working with the landowner and following the recommendation of planning and zoning for the frontage to be on alternative and less intensive use than the M-one, to provide for some complementary uses. So we're going to come back with a recommendation and the outline of what that zoning would be.
Go ahead.
What is the clarification, that's the clarification?
Yeah, just the clarification, Olly.
Yeah. Motion to close, public hearing number six.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Would council consider opening nine through seventeen?
Nine?
Through seventeen.
Motion? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot One, Block One, North Ridge Commercial Plant, located at eighty-five eleven McPherson Road, Suites one oh nine, one ten, and one eleven, three thousand square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit, and staff supports the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance number ten, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lots five, six, seven, and eight block of eight, eighteen seventy-seven, Eastern Division, attractive land containing approximately three thousand seven hundred twenty-two point five square feet out of, and, out of and part of a fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-two point thirty-five square feet tract out of a former section of Ross Street between India Avenue and Canada Avenue, being bounded on the north by Block eighteen seventy-seven, Eastern Division, and on the south by Block eighteen seventy-eight, Eastern Division, city of Laredo, per plat recorded in volume seven, page fifteen of the Webb County, Texas plat records, said fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-two point thirty-five square feet tract of land being the property described in warranty D. from the city of Laredo to W.E. Haynes Realty Limited dated June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-eight, and recorded in volume six five one, pages twenty-three to twenty-seven of the Webb County Official Public Records, and Lot Four, Block eighteen seventy-eight, Eastern Division, located at three thousand, uh, High, High Missap at the Memorial Highway and three thousand Le, Le, Le Gard Street. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit, and staff supports the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by amending ordinance twenty fourteen oh ninety-two, which authorizes a conditional use permit for a truck sales center on the south half of Lot Five, Lot Five A, Block two six six, Western Division, an attractive land containing point two zero four six acres, parentheses, eight nine, one four point four square feet, more or less out of Lot Seven, Block two hundred sixty-seven, uh, two, two hundred sixty-six, situated in the Western Division of the city of Laredo, Webb County, Texas, located at fifteen twelve, fifteen fourteen, fifteen eighteen, Santa Ursula Avenue. In order to remove whom the permit is issued to and amend the hours of operations, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit amendment, amendment, and staff supports the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of conditional use permit for a bar on Lot One, Block One, Frank J. Guerra subdivision, located at ninety-eight eleven, Gaya del Norte, lobby, a thousand one hundred twenty-four square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit, and staff supports the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately four point thirty-five acre tract, tract of lands situated in Portion Thirty-nine, Abstract two fifty, Jose Antonio Nasario, original grantee, within the limits of the city of Laredo and Webb County, Texas, said four point three five four two acre tract being out of and part of HJPO Holdings Limited Liability Company, two hundred nineteen point forty-eight acre tract, as reported in volume four five four three, pages four fifty-five through four sixty-seven of the Webb County deed records, Webb County, Texas, located south of Tesi Drive and west of U.S. Highway eighty-three, from agricultural district to R-one B, single-family high-density district. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change, and staff supports the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of conditional use permit for a veterinarian indoor animal confinement, a dash veterinary clinic, on Lot One, Block One, Imami Plaza Platte, located at thirty-three eleven, East Delmar Boulevard, Suite two oh one, three thousand fifty-seven square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit, and staff supports the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending ordinance number two, twenty sixteen oh, uh, zero zero six, which established the rental rate structure for the Jose A. Flores duplex conflict, complex located at the old Air Force Base, providing for a biannual increase of thirty dollars per month for a two-bedroom, forty-five dollars per month for a three-bedroom, and sixty dollars per month for a four-bedroom on October first, twenty twenty-three, and October first, twenty twenty-five, providing security deposits for new tenants in the same amount as the monthly rental, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict her, herewith, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. The proposed new rental rates reflect a lower rate than the market and HUD fair market rent, FMR, below as a comparison of the current proposed and HUD FMR rates. Jose A. Flores duplexes, two-bedroom, current, five fourteen, proposed for ten one twenty-three, five forty-four, proposed for ten one twenty-five, five seventy-five, HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three, nine ninety-five. Three-bedroom, current, six forty, proposed, October first, twenty twenty-three, six eighty-five, proposed, October first, twenty twenty-five, seven hundred thirty, HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three, a thousand two hundred seventy-six. Four-bedroom, current, seven thirty-one, proposed, uh, October first, twenty twenty-three, seven hundred ninety-one, proposed, October first, twenty twenty-five, eight hundred fifty-one, HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three, a thousand three hundred and eighty. Amending ordinance number twenty sixteen oh seven, which established the rental rate structure for the Tomas Flores apartment complex located at twenty-three oh one and twenty-three oh two Lafayette Street, providing for a biannual increase of thirty dollars per month for a two-bedroom, and forty-five dollars per month for a three-bedroom on October first, one twenty-three, and October first, twenty twenty-five, providing security deposits for new tenants in the same amount as the monthly rental, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. The proposed new rental rate reflects the lower rate than the market and HUD fair market rent, FMR, below as a comparison of the current rate proposed and the HUD FMR rates. Tomas Flores apartment, two-bedroom, current rate of four hundred forty-four, proposed at four, on ten one twenty-three, four seventy-four, proposed, October first, twenty twenty-five, five oh four HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three, nine hundred ninety-five. Three-bedroom, five hundred thirty-one, current, uh, proposed for October first, twenty twenty-three, five seventy-six, proposed, October first, twenty twenty-five, six hundred twenty-one, HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three, a thousand two hundred seventy-six. Amending, public hearing and intra-ordinance amending ordinance number twenty eighteen oh sixty-five, which established the rental rate structure for all properties managed through the city of Laredo, Federal Aviation Regulation, FAR, Part one fifty Airport Noise Compatibility Program. This amendment increases the monthly rental rates for residential and multifamily units effective October first, twenty twenty-three, and for October first, twenty twenty-five. The increase will be a fifteen dollars for a one-bedroom unit, thirty dollars for two-bedroom units, and forty-five dollars for three-bedroom units, sixty dollars for four-bedroom units, and seventy-five dollars for five-bedroom units. These rental rate adjustments are necessary in order to cover increases in costs associated with material supplies and specialized contractual services. Service fees required to properly maintain the rental units. The deposit amount for all new tenants on or after October first, twenty twenty-three will be established at the same rate as the rental amount, and repealing all ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Noise abatement, noise, noise abatement properties, one-bedroom, average current is four fifty-five, average proposed for October first, twenty twenty-three is four seventy, average proposed for October first, twenty twenty-five is four eighty-five, HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three is seven ninety-six. Two-bedroom, current rate is five twenty-three, average proposed rate for October first, twenty twenty-three is five fifty-three, average proposed rate for October first, twenty twenty-five is five eighty-three, HUD fair market rate, twenty twenty-three is nine ninety-five. A three-bedroom, average rate is six forty-two, the average proposed rate for October first, twenty twenty-three is six eighty-seven, average proposed rate for October first, twenty twenty-five is seven thirty-two, and HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three is a thousand two hundred seventy-six. Four-bedroom, average current rate is seven sixty-nine, average proposed rate for October first, twenty twenty-three is eight twenty-nine, average proposed rate for October first, twenty twenty-five is eight eighty-nine, and HUD fair market rent, twenty twenty-three is thirteen eighty.
These are public hearings, Mayor.
Four against, four against.
All right. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against?
Motion to close this, please, Mayor.
Motion, second.
Number nine, sir.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number ten. Okay, number ten, four are against? Four are against? Four are against?
Motion to close and approve?
Motion? Second?
Introduce.
Motion to close and introduce?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Number eleven.
Eleven. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against? Go ahead.
So, this person, um, C.H.V. Investments has a truck sales center, so they're just amending their conditional use permit. Uh, the items that they're, they're amending is, well, the hours of operation is what they're, they're changing. But everything else remains the same.
Why is it removing the permit to whom this is issued? This here says that in order to remove the, whom the permit is issued to.
Removal, the CUP issues, I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong slide. Yes, it's to, to, the issuance is to Roberto Perez and Francisco Vela, and then the amendment is, they're on the screen, from nine thirty to six P.M., to nine thirty to seven P.M., Saturdays from nine thirty to four thirty, and will close on Sundays. Basically, those are the changes they're asking for of their conditional use permit.
Okay, I just was curious about the removal of the permit.
Uh, it's just an amendment to the permit.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
Close and introduce.
Second?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Item twelve?
Motion to close and introduce?
Four against? Four against? Four against? Second? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Thirteen. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against? Second? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Fourteen. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against? Motion to close and introduce?
Second?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Fifteen. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second?
Motion, second. All in favor? Against? Motion pass. Sixteen. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second, just for discussion real quick, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, if I may be recognized, these are rental increases, but I didn't want to point out for the public watching and those that reside in these units, that the proposed rent is still significantly lower than what the actual market rental value is right now, if not half, close to fifty percent of that. So although there is a twenty, thirty dollar increase, you know, they could essentially pay double than that, and, and I think it's a very fair increase considering the market the way it is right now, and I think it is a very merited increase so that we can continue to maintain the properties and provide, um, uh, quality properties, which I know CD focuses on municipal housing tremendously to the public and those people that are trying to reach affordable rental housing, but just wanted to put that on the record, Mayor.
Okay. You have a motion?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion pass.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Four are against? Four are against? Four are against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion pass.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring up your item A-one supplemental. Do we have eighteen?
Eighteen.
That's a triple.
We'll have everyone say. Motion to bring supplemental, uh, item, agenda item A-one, Mayor's argument.
Okay, motion?
Second?
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. This is a request by Mayor. Discussion possible action on creating task force and memorandum of understanding, MOU, with community-based agencies to help the city's efforts in information, education, and assistance related to property tax relief, preventing foreclosure and any matters related thereto. Co-sponsored by Mayor Protem, Melissa Perez, Councilmember Alberto Torres, and Councilmember Luango Tena Junior. This item was placed on the agenda, we have been seeing, we have, having discussions with some of our state representatives, like Richard Rayman and Tracy King, where the state is who about, is who about to pass a seventeen point six billion property tax relief, which would be the largest property tax relief in Texas history. But this agenda item is further, further supplements this benefit by creating a task force to identify, inform, and educate property owners on tools and benefits that exist that may not be utilized. This would include existing, exercising their property tax rights, property rights.
May I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So in consideration of property tax relief, we know the concern is out there that the public has seen valuations increase dramatically, and that's been true across the state. Some say it's fueled by the pandemic, it, inflation has played a role certainly, but I think we need to understand, or the public should understand, that the state of Texas has implemented a three point five percent cap on additional revenues that the city can collect. What that means is, the property tax rate will go down. We won't know that final amount until the property tax valuations are finalized. And I am no expert, I did ask Ms. Maldonado, the director of the department, with help in my understanding of this. But the public should understand, although the valuations have increased, that property tax rate will decrease. Right now, the amount is not final, but it will be some sense off of that property tax rate. That's the only contribution I wanted to make.
I wanted to mention that this council, at least for the last six, seven years that I've been here, has worked tirelessly to ensure that we bring the tax rate down as much as we can. And I know that there are discussions that we've had with management, and sometimes it's tidying the budget, right, but still having to meet the, um, obligations that we have as a municipality is where we have the challenge. But ultimately, staff has done their part in ensuring that, and understanding that this, the previous councils, and I'm sure this council, want to provide tax relief, right, and it affects everyone's pockets, and the state, it correlates with the state's notions of focusing on giving tax relief across the state, right? But Councilmember Melissa Sigarroa did hit the nail right on the head, and as we may work tirelessly to decrease the tax rate, the property valuations are really what's hurting people's pockets when it comes to seeing their tax bill each year. And we're optimistic that the governor will do his part in trying to help across the board, in helping, uh, bring down taxation. But, um, we know that state representative, like you mentioned, Richard Raymond, is championing this effort, he's done it tirelessly when we visited with him in Austin, he's made it very clear that he's probably one of the few Democrats that focuses on bringing tax relief. But it seems now that it's becoming a bipartisan issue, where both, uh, sides of the aisle are focusing in bringing this relief because of property valuations increasing, like Councilmember Sigarroa mentioned, due to the pandemic, or because of the economy. Ultimately, Mayor, I did want to recognize your efforts in, um, putting together this item and championing the task force, because I think that it's important that we have a group of people that understand this, um, to help the community in the different options that they have. Something very simple is appealing your property valuations. And I know Councilmember Alisa Sigarroa, um, through her community group, has tried to help the people in her district in doing exactly that. And we need to do that across the city, because there's a lot of options available out there And we need to do that across the city, because there's a lot of options available out there for people to fight for their property valuations to not increase. A lot of people don't take advantage of the homestead exemptions. People don't take advantage of the over sixty-five or even disability. And we see that over and over. And I think that the creation of this task force, Mayor, that you're proposing, will do exactly that. Will address educating the public, bringing resources to them, but more so making the community understand the importance of fighting for, for tax relief for their properties, especially their homesteads. I wholeheartedly support this item, especially because the prevention of foreclosure is important, because our goal should also be making sure that people have a roof over their heads and that we don't contribute to the homeless numbers and population, that we have affordable housing in our city. So I'd like to make a motion to approve your item, Mayor, in creating this task force and also engaging it to the M O Us as you deem necessary through the city manager, and that the city manager also execute any other M O Us with organizations and nonprofits that can help move this forward. And I think we're somewhat late in the game for this year, being that the A R B board is probably in their final weeks of hearings. I know, because I just had to reschedule mine today, and they're like, there's no more days available. But we can start working now for next year's valuations and hoping that the state does come through and does their part. And I know that it may hurt our pockets a little bit, but I'm very, very optimistic that staff would be able to address any possible shortfalls emitted.
Second, that motion. Motion, second, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, so we, we have been making videos to our P I O department in regards to how to file for these different efforts. We'll continue to do that. We'll go ahead and assign our tax department, our Texas assessor collector as liaison, get the, get the different entities involved. And also, I was thinking about getting our tax law firm, our tax attorneys to be able to also be involved in creating some type of video and maybe having a small town hall, whether it's virtual or actual, to be able to inform the public on what to do as far as foreclosures are concerned this year and then in future years to come for additional tax relief information.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so just as at the appraisal district, just so the public knows, the appraisal, our chief appraiser is pretty much follows state guidelines on the way he appraises and, and he kind of has to follow a certain formula and he has to justify variances. And so it's kind of, he also has to, if the state sees that he's not keeping up, you know, there's a lot of kind of bureaucracy that goes along with this valuations thing and, and it's not city-driven. But we do have an organization, Neighbor Works, that I'd like to suggest that we work with, because I know they have come to us for, for funding and for partnerships. And one of the big problems that we're seeing is that people buy homes, but then they don't realize that they have to go and make an additional step to claim a homestead exemption. So they're basically leaving all this money on the table for themselves that, you know, we were trying to figure out through the mayor's office, working with the mayor on, and that's where Representative Raymond was talking about possibly making it mandatory to, you know, include that as part of their transfer package and stuff like that. So it's kind of, it would be great for that to, to pass at the state level. But here locally, I think any efforts we can make to make sure that anybody who buys their home knows that they have to get their exemption first of all, and then anybody that's sixty-five or older can freeze their valuation. So as their home value increases, they're not going to be paying any more than they will at the time that they were sixty-five.
And disabled also.
Yes, and, and disabled, and also veterans, there's relief for veterans as well. But I think Neighbor Works would be a good organization to work with on this.
Mayor, I'd be heard for a follow-up comment. There's a question for, for Zone legally. Is there anything we can do through an ordinance that would require title companies at closing to inform the public of homestead exemptions or if they're veterans, because there's, they identify themselves as veterans at closing, that they inform them of also that, that exception? I know that at closing, there's different information that the State Board of Realtors mandates that is provided to buyers and sellers at closing, and there's a lot of information sheets. But could we do something through ordinance that would require these title companies to inform buyers there is a homestead exemption, you have a right to request this exemption, it will save you taxes? If they identify them as someone who's sixty-five and over, inform them of that exemption as well? And if they're veterans and all those are identifying factors at closing, that they also inform them at that process that they have those options to save under taxes? Could we make that an ordinance mandate or?
I, I see a couple of ways of doing it. It's almost like a P S A in a way. So my concern about requiring an ordinance of a particular, you know, commercial entity is, you know, just our, our jurisdiction within the city limits. And I, I was thinking that to accomplish what you were saying, we can look into requiring that at closing, but also maybe doing a public service. That way you, you reach people and get that information out. But I'm looking to the ordinance as far as.
I'd like to amend my motion to also include that management and legal research, the possibility of an ordinance that would require title companies to inform the public at closing of ways to provide tax relief, whether it's all the exemptions available through the appraisal district.
As amended. Motion?
May I?
Check them.
Yes, sir.
Check them, go ahead.
Good. Is, is part of that, and maybe through our legal department, could we find out if this is an issue with title companies? I, I, just knowing someone who works in that field, it seems to me that to, to have best business practices and meet their ethical standards, they already provide that information. I don't know, I think the public service campaign and maybe having some materials that are written in both languages would help for the city to then distribute to the title companies and help in those efforts to reach people, especially those whom English is not their, their first language, their primary language.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, because our, our issue would be trying to enforce those to out-of-city title companies. I know that it's within our jurisdictions, the way our attorney was saying, but it's how do we enforce to those outside of Laredo. But the information would be very helpful at closing.
So I, I don't, I don't know how that would amend the, the ordinance, but just to be aware of the limitations of our jurisdiction and very heavily favoring information in both English and Spanish for our population.
All right.
Mayor, one more amendment. If for whatever reason we cannot make this an ordinance, but primarily I'd wanted an ordinance, right? And we can figure the enforcement out later. If we could find it through a resolution and send that to all title companies, but primarily it'd be an ordinance, right? And we'll figure out the enforcement later.
As amended.
And I think the title companies would comply, because they've got to comply with state requirements.
Or if we provide the, the language and then you submit it.
Correct.
Insert it in.
Correct.
All right. Okay, motion and second, as amended.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion, Mayor, open up and introduce your ordinances, eighteen and nineteen, and second reading.
Mayor, if, if council would consider just the intro, if council would consider introducing eighteen and nineteen? I thought you said open.
Okay, motion?
No, there's nothing.
Just introduce.
Okay, twenty.
Mayor, may I? On, on number eighteen, the amending the ordinance for the code of ordinances referring to the Economic Advisory Council. I had spoken to my appointee at the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and there was a suggestion that perhaps there was additional information that was going to be provided at council. And so I just wanted to clarify if that's ready or will that be presented at another stage?
Mayor, not to our knowledge, not to our knowledge.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Castillo Director for Economic Development.
I'm not too sure what particular additional information the committee member was.
Well, that's, I guess that is my question, because I, I, I read through some of these with her and, and there was an understanding that perhaps there was an additional clarification that was going to come through or some additional information, but.
I guess the only clarification for council would be that this, this ordinance had to be amended, because originally back in the nineteen nineties, when the committee was created, it was created under a completely different structure to what it has evolved right now, to where each one of you appoint a, a committee member. And the committee was still working under the structure of twelve members by industry, and I guess that's one of the big.
Twelve to nine.
Yeah, so the only change would be, or highlight would be that the, the main change on, on the ordinance is changing it from twelve to nine just so that it can follow with the actual structure of the committee. But I'll be more than glad to follow up with a committee member if there's any.
No, I, I think that's it. I, I, it was just for some additional clarifying information would be provided, so I'm, I'm very happy to hear that, thank you.
Yes, and all of the changes were presented to the board and to the advisory committee as well, and they accepted them as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to bring up your items, go on the regular agenda, which would be A one and two.
Motion, second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. This would be, what number is that?
A one.
A one, request by Mayor. Status update with possible action on modifying the city's Laredo donation policy and any matters related thereto. Wanted to bring this item up because I know we spoke about this item at the previous city council meeting. And when we lost a large donation of dog food to another city, because it was valued over one hundred thousand. Because we need to update our city rules so the city can accept these type of donations and have different type of limitations.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Go ahead.
I recall us discussing exactly this item. And the instruction to management was that there be a policy that would allow the city manager to approve anything up to fifty thousand. And that if it exceeded fifty thousand, the city manager deemed that the donation, that the city would benefit from the donation to give the city manager through ordinance the power to accept the donation, and we would ratify that later. I don't know if that ordinance was ever written or compiled, but that was the conversation we had once, maybe three months ago.
And actually, we, we checked and we saw drafts, but there were never, it was never signed, so.
Was it ever introduced? So it needs to be introduced?
And in practice, though, even without that ordinance, if there is something that is beneficial to the city, such that the staff and through city manager can still accept and, and come to you to ratify, just that the, the amount, I believe, was just so that we can have accounting and so forth, because, you know, it may become an asset on the books.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that staff bring back an ordinance for a first reading at the next council meeting to include the language that we discussed, to give the city manager the authority to accept anything up to fifty thousand dollars at their discretion, and if anything exceeds fifty thousand, and they see that the city could benefit from that donation that they accepted with the authority given through them through this ordinance, and that it be brought to council as a ratification, simply to notify council of the donation accepted.
Second, motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Now, this is A two. Discussion with possible action authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the city of Nolo Laredo, identifying areas along the river that are mutually important towards shared history, culture, and environmental importance that matters related to. And the reason why I put this on the agenda is part of the continuation of what was already passed by council at the last meeting on the identification and preservation of historically, culturally, and environmentally important areas in our community. In essence, this memorandum of understanding allows us to engage the city of Laredo on identifying and protecting areas we share along the river.
Is that your motion, Mayor?
Motion?
I'll second that.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Thank you. So had we unfinished, let it move to twenty? Yes, yes, go ahead.
May we bring back your item eight two for question?
Eight two, motion to bring back eight two. Motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Mayor, the areas of mutual agreement, do we have those identified by you already or by members of the council? So that we could go ahead and draft this ordinance?
It's related to identification and preservation of historic culture and environmentally, I think environmentally is, is.
In order to identify what areas?
Wait, legal work on that, Mayor, by chance? Had legal work on to bring us back?
Yes, we could do it.
What the recommendation is, please?
You, you want us to try to identify these areas?
Well, are they going to be specified or do we know which ones they are? Or in case we have another area that's, that fits into this category, will you incorporate it? Or you have to actually do another legal document?
It'd be good to identify and take them out, you know, as opposed to just leaving it open-ended and having things plugged in. I would think that council would want to, to know what is going to be.
Right. Mayor, finally, yeah, they can identify what is needed and then move it forward from then on, absolutely, to bring it to us.
Yes, go ahead.
May I suggest that the environmental department work with risk or environmental advocacy organization with the Webb County Heritage Foundation? And with any other nonprofit you might feel is, would have that type of knowledge, that type of institutional knowledge to be able to identify these historic and cultural areas and environmentally sensitive areas? So that when we enter into a conversation with Nuevo Laredo, we are proposing what we see from our side, and I'm more than certain that Mayor Carmen Lilia Cantor Rosas will have a team that is also identifying cultural, culturally important areas on the Nuevo Laredo side. And we have a basis for coming together and, and coming up with this bi-national identification of these sites.
All right, we just have to be cautious on that, because then this could open to any and anything, everything and anything. So we want to make sure that it, it fits into this idea that we're having here. So if we could go ahead and identify these, these things by legal first, and then we can discuss the other factors that may fit in, rather than just putting a blanket, blanket thing, because I'm afraid that everything and anything will be included.
May I be heard, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And that that list is compiled, that it be brought to us, that we can see the areas, discuss them, and then approve the list or omit or add, I think would be important as well, whether we follow the advisement of environmental and management in this.
Yes, go ahead.
I think the city attorney is just looking for guidance here, because, you know, it's not, he's a legal expert. He's not an expert in identifying historically important places along the river. And I think that gets to what Councilmember Sigarroa was getting at. We need, you know, to bring a bunch of experts together who actually can identify those historic sites. I, I don't think, I don't think Mr. Zone, I don't think he's, he believes that he's qualified to do that. And doesn't seem like that's a good use of his time. So I would think it'd be nice if we kind of gave him a little direction on who they should talk to and who they should work with and subcontract this out, because I think Mr. Zone has a lot of other things to do besides compile a list of the. I, I want to do this, but I think we should be making sure we're empowering the, the city attorney and staff to subcontract this out a little bit and not put it all to them.
And I think your idea is good, that we need to have people that are involved in this to, to save what would be culturally significant, environmentally significant. So this is just the idea that we need to get this done and we can proceed from that.
Wonderful, Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
So I would, I would have the Rio Grande International Study Center on that list, the Webb County Heritage Foundation, also Tammy U, their history department, and Laredo College. And the Historic Naming Commission as well, which I will, I think Webb County Heritage Foundation will have access to the state of Texas historic databases. And so I think that those resources can be accessed through the participation of Webb County Heritage Foundation.
All right.
Oh, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
What Councilmember King said is, you know, we kind of don't want to bog down legal. I think maybe the best thing would be send it to the commission, let them come up with some suggestions and then present them to us so we can come to this, an agreement and then have legal intervene, if that's okay, just so he does, they don't, you know, lose their focus on what they're working on.
And commissions that are involved in this and identifying would be very beneficial. And I would say commissions that are already established.
When does that commission meet, the historic commission, when, when is their next meeting? Maybe we can get it on the agenda for them to talk about starting their next meeting.
Long and narrow for the record, we can, we can create a meeting, because we don't typically have a lot of agenda items. So it depends on the week, but it's usually the, the second Wednesday of the month. But we can go ahead and schedule a special meeting, or we can have them come in so that we could talk about this and, and get it done.
Maybe for July's meeting, have them put this on the agenda to identify some culturally significant areas for, for consideration?
Absolutely.
We have conversations in regards to that.
Yes, and, and we could reach out to the entities that you talked about and have them attend that meeting so that we can have a, a good discussion with all the different entities. We can do that also.
So we can be on the same page, the conversations are important.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, did we vote already? Okay. Motion, we have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, item twenty? Second reading?
Mayor, item number twenty is the second reading of item number twenty, authorizing the city manager to grant a non-exclusive franchise to Iralo to use the present and future streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways, sidewalks, easements, and other public right-of-way of the city of Laredo, Texas for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating commercial container, refuge, gathering, and disposing service, setting forth terms and conditions to govern the franchise, providing for servability clause and a savings clause and an effective date.
Motion's approved.
Second. Motion? Second?
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
This is, I think, the third non-exclusive franchise given to a company that will haul trash from different construction sites or residential sites and I'm wondering from management if there's a way or if there's some consideration done to the, these heavy vehicles being on the road, if some of the fees collected can be directed to Public Works or whatever our road maintenance department is in, so to recognize the fact that these particular heavy vehicles are damaging city roads. And maybe that's a consideration that's already given, but it's something that we need to consider. This, this is the third private contracting firm that has been granted a license in the last, just a few months.
John Porter Environmental and Solid Waste again. So yes, we do get a four percent of their gross, gross profits, but that doesn't go to solid waste, that does go to general fund, but, but whether that's earmarked or not, I don't know.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
I was about to mention that I was gonna say, I think it's an administrative matter where we apply the percentage, right, and it doesn't go to...
Public Works.
Public Works, right.
Well, technically, general fund has fund public works.
But it's not, there's no ordinance says whatever's collected goes to Public Works for extreme improvement.
No, no.
Do we know what that four percent generates right now?
Do you know?
Remember, address the chair, please. It, it's maybe six, seven hundred thousand a year.
Not much with that.
The two, the two big players are obviously the private trash haulers with the dumpsters.
But we, Mayor, if I can follow up, I don't know if Mr. Ophelia's here, but half a million does nothing for our roads. I mean, that's, sounds like a lot, but it's nothing. It's, maybe it'll be good enough for potholes, but I'm sure it'll help. I know we've been working diligently each year to put more money into Public Works for street paving and repaving, but...
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, if something we'll do is look at the ordinance again and revise it, I know that we're letting everyone and anyone in and maybe we can have a cap of how many people come in on an annual basis, for one, and looking at the, at the fees and coming back and bringing them back revised.
I think we can discuss, Mayor, we can discuss this at budget time.
We'll bring you back the...
Think it'd be adequate.
If I may?
The recommendation.
Just a comment, one company or other company has to pick it up regardless. So we can have twenty companies, thirty companies, regardless, that material needs to be picked up. Yes, their heavy equipment, but whether it's a city unit or whether they're private units, those materials need to be picked up from this particular job site. I don't see what the difference is, how many private businesses we allow into the city of Laredo.
I, I mean, to me, competition's good and, and what that guarantees is that they're going to keep the disposal within Laredo and they're not going to take that outside for, you know, into Zabata or Starr County or wherever. So, so we, we do get a benefit from that because as part of that, they have to go to cities landfill.
Thank you. Mr. Ophelia, did you need to say something, please?
Mayor, Mr. Council John Ophelia, for the record, and yes, Public Works could use any monies it could get. Luckily, this council and the previous councils have given us, we've been fortunate to get monies from y'all and as y'all can tell, we are paving, but prices continue to go up and we continue to hit general fund. So if we could find another source of funding, everything helps because again, we don't stop nonetheless. You know, the plant is down or Tech Talk, which is about to start paving again very hard in the I thirty-five and eighty-three, so that slows us down a little bit, but we still don't, don't stop. So if we can find any, there's a way to find funding, of course, we'll take it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Motion, second? There was a motion, it was second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item twenty-one, Mayor, is a third and final reading of item twenty-one, twenty-two-three-dash-oh-dash-one-zero-nine, authorizing city manager to grant a non-exclusive franchise to dump it, dumpsters, rentals, to use the present and future streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways, sidewalks, easements, and other public right-of-way of the city of Laredo, Texas for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating commercial container, refuge, gathering, and disposing service, setting forth terms and conditions to govern the franchise, providing for servability clause, a savings clause, and an effective date.
All right.
Motion's approved.
All right, motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Against? Motion passes.
Motion to approve final reading of ordinances, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, Mayor?
And adopt.
Excuse me?
And adopt, please.
And adopt.
Thank you. Motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items number twenty-five through fifty-four. Unless there's any items my colleagues would like to connect.
One exception, is number twenty-six and thirty, please.
As amended or requested by Councilmember Seguroa?
I'll second that motion. All right. Motion, second, as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Clover Sport Austin, Texas, Pfizer, for the purchase and setup of a point-of-sale system for the Sams Auto Arena, Arena and the Unitrade Stadium. Pricing is through Omnia Cooperative Purchasing Program, contract number eleven dash forty-seven. POS system will be used for concessions, sales, inventory, audit controls, and includes the application, server, storage, database, all end-user devices, training, and turnkey installation. For Sams Auto Arena, amount of up to one hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and forty for the first year of installation and a subsequent yearly software subscription amount of approximately thirty-six thousand two hundred for the term period of one year beginning as of the date of its execution, up to a five-year term period. For Unitrade Stadium, amount up to one hundred and two seven oh one thousand for the first year of installation and a subsequent yearly software subscription amount of approximately twenty-seven thousand one hundred for the term period of one year beginning as of the date of its execution, up to a five-year term period. Funding is available on the Sams Auto Arena Fund and the Sports and Community Venue Fund. And really, the, my question, Mayor, is if we could ask, because this Sports and Community Venue Fund will be accessed for the funding for these two areas and we know that the Sports and Community Venue Fund has been the object of some consideration because of the sports complex and the lack of availability of funds there, I would like to ask the budget director for a presentation and report of the expenses that are currently authorized by the Sports and Community Venue Fund, future commitments on that fund, a projection of the fund balance, so that we can consider the ability of this fund to absorb future operations and perhaps a difference in the capital outline, outlays, including current renovations to the Unitrade Arena versus operating expenses. They all seem to come from the same fund and I think we would be well-served to better understand the capacity of that fund, to fund capital outlays, to fund operating expenses, and then when that fund cannot meet those obligations, where does that money come from? So the request or the motion is to ask that you come, I don't know if we can do a motion? Okay, request city management to be able to provide that report and presentation at the next council meeting.
We can do that, Council, because as part of the budget department, we can do that. A clarification on this item, the one oh two for the Unitrade is what is coming out of the sports venue, the one hundred and eighty-two is what's coming from the Sams Auto Arena operations that they have. So the only monies we're pulling out of the sports venue is a hundred and two thousand.
Okay, from the Sports and Community Venue Fund.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Go ahead.
My only concern with this, and I guess management can address it, would be the operations. I know Unitrade, we are in the end or part of the season for the, the baseball season, but the arena is year-round and how would this affect the operations of the Sams Auto Arena?
They have money set aside for this type of expenditures and that's what we're, we're gonna use. We're not using the operating monies that are used for the events or anything of that sort.
But what I'm trying to say is the motion set forth right now, it's going to stop this expenditure. It's not, we're gonna be able to move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just a request for a presentation about the use of the Sports and Community Venue Fund.
Can that be done with the mo, with the item? Because I think it'd be a total violation.
It was just directed at management.
Well, but you made a motion?
No, I, I retract it.
I'm just, I don't know, that's...
It's just a request for management.
We will have that, we can include that in the workshop as well because that is one of the fund summaries that we submitted for approval.
Okay. I appreciate that very much.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So Unitrade and Sams are very close together, so I see that we're paying kind of like the same installation cost upfront for the two different entities. Does any of this include Wi-Fi where we could maybe have boosters to boost the Wi-Fi signal off of one instead of having to install two different ones or is there any way that we can get like these two entities included in one project where it's like we're splitting the costs because we're, we're doing two for one instead of treating each one as its own separate customer?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Juan Mendiola, for the record. These systems that we're getting are just to have the capability of charging credit card transactions, cash transactions, in every single point-of-sale that we establish at both facilities. These systems could only be used in the area where the server is located. So for example, the system at Sams Auto Arena is gonna go installed, then Sams Auto Arena is gonna communicate with the server that we currently have there in our facility and the other system is gonna connect to the Unitrade facility and then they'll have capabilities there to be able to do that. In regards to your question of Wi-Fi, right now I have, we bought an antenna that communicates with the Sams Auto, the Unitrade facility, facility communicates with the Sams Auto Arena to be able to get some Wi-Fi services, but at the end of the day, I, I believe the Unitrade Stadium would need its own independent Wi-Fi access points installed throughout the facility. The access points don't expand as far as to be able to cover that distance that is between our facilities. It could, you know, like certain access points would only cover certain square footage and certain user capabilities per square footage in those facilities.
Uh, Mayor, may I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess for management, you know, it seems like these two entities are not that far apart and you take a, like a university campus, for example, and they've connected the whole campus to one server or how they, however they do it connectivity-wise, I don't see why we can't have a one, one server that would serve our, you know, let's call it the entertainment district, where we're enhancing that server and that server's feeding out to our, our, our arena or, I, I don't see why we can't go to something like that versus treating them both as separate when they're so close together.
I think that, I'm, I'm not sure I'm not the expert in, in the technology part of it, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I know that the expenses were separated, this is the motion that was done to separate expenses and be able to track them accordingly. I'm not sure how the network is going to work. I would leave that to, to the consultant in the department.
In, in this case, I was told by the IT departments that we do utilize in our facilities is that it would have to be an independent system. Right now, we get fiber into the Sams Auto Arena. At the Unitrade Stadium, we currently don't have fiber and because of the construction and, and things like that, I, I think it's very limited connectivity that we have there. We are trying to explore all the options that are available and, and once we have those options that are available, we can present them to management and, and so that they can have an idea of how the system would communicate, but I just don't know if there's a way where the system can communicate with both facilities even if they are as close as they are.
Well, I think that would be an important consideration for us to make this decision is, is this the best possible decision or is this the decision we have to make right now and then work towards a better model for next year? Or is there still room for getting this situated because in terms of like what other bigger cities do and the, the distance between the arena and the Unitrade are really not that far and the fact that we don't have fiber optic cable, I think that's something we should probably get fixed soon because it's kind of the entertainment area part of town and for us to not have updated utilities is, is a little bit concerning.
This system was just a POS system in regards to fiber, I totally agree. I think we need to be operating with fiber, otherwise whatever systems we get and the capabilities of communicating with each other and with the server and, and everything wouldn't, wouldn't be available without that.
We'll certainly look at it, Mayor, and come back.
All right. Okay.
Do, the, the motion is to approve the expenditure?
Second.
Motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, Mayor, clarification?
Yes.
Are we approving the expenditure as it's written here or are we exploring the other options we discussed and then coming back for approval? Or we're spending, we're approving the amount? Charlie can go ahead and go forward.
We're approving actually, go forward.
Yeah, that's, we're approving the amount.
Sorry?
So we're not exploring?
There are two different things that we're talking about, Mayor, if I may add. This is to be able to bring in the POS, the, the, the software to be able to do the counts in the areas. In addition to that, they'll, we'll find a better way, if there is a better way, to be able to do the connectivity on the equipment that we're trying to purchase.
Well, because a big part of what we're approving is the installation for the first year, so it's a one-time installation cost.
That is correct.
Of close to three hundred thousand dollars, but on two different servers that are located with a few blocks of each other.
Okay, so, yeah.
Let's see, to clarify the motion, I think we need to be clear on this. So can we clarify what we're saying? To approve the item, Mayor, as is?
To, to clarify, what he's purchasing is two point-of-sale systems for two different entities in two different operations, which is the Sams Auto Arena and the Unitrade. So the communication is a secondary issue that we need to find better communication, but right now what he's buying is two point-of-sale systems to charge for the concession stands and any other items that they have within each organization, within this, the Sams Auto Arena and the Unitrade.
For, for example, in that, in Sams Auto Arena, we have about fifty-six, more or less, units where we can accept credit card transactions, you know, at any given time at the same time, and at Unitrade, it's, it's gonna be around thirty-six units where we would be able to take those credit card transactions. So the, this is equipment that we're actually purchasing to be able to ha, make those transactions happen and, and update our menus and things like that.
Just approving the item as is, correct? All right, so we're clear on that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, has it been said?
Nobody's against it.
All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number thirty, discussion with possible action to enter into agreement with the Laredo Pony Association for sponsorship in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars of the twenty-twenty-three World Series softball tournament to be...
to be held from July ninth through July sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the World Series baseball tournament to be held from July twenty-sixth to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. It is anticipated that over one hundred teams will participate from throughout the United States for the softball tournament, and twenty teams from Europe, Asia, Mexico, and the U.S. for the baseball tournament. Funding is available in the Convention and Visitors Bureau Fund and Recreation Fund. And I really just wanted to highlight the fact that these baseball tournaments are an investment of the city. I do believe that the economic stimulation that the city will receive from hosting all of these teams coming from all over the world will give us an economic boost. But the, I, I just wanted to, for us to understand that it is an economic investment that we make, and so, baseball tournaments in and of themselves need to be planned and thought out, and don't necessarily come without a cost. I don't know if you want to comment on what you think that this particular year will look like, or the success of previous year's tournaments?
Uh, Mayor, Council, Richard Ross, as Laredo Pony President. Yes, it is an investment, and it's an economic investment in past previous years through CBB and parks and previous council and previous mayors. The impact it lives in the city, it's, it's a huge one. So, the, the investment, ninety thousand, believe me, it's, it's gonna go well over a million coming back to the city. There was, in January, McAllen does the Pony International softball, just to give you an idea. They handle about eighty to a hundred teams. Their economic impact in January, they announced it, because they're gonna host it again, was about one point three million. So, you do the multiplier, that will give you what's turning around here locally in the city. So, yes, again, we've had great success from hotels. Uh, I know I've forwarded some information to, uh, uh, city management, Eileen from CBB. Because they go through, every team that comes through the Softball World Series gets recorded through Hotel Planner. That's a company that Pony Corporate uses to monitor everybody that registers through the hotels. They need to go through that. So, it gives you an idea how many rooms, how many room nights, and all that, which is great information.
Wonderful, and these teams are hosted from all over the world. In order to have a qualifying tournament, what does that require of the Pony League?
Yes, Pony has a qualifying tournaments around the world. I'll give you an example. The international teams that are already won in their zones, Europe, we got, for the first time, these international teams will be making their way to the city of Laredo. Uh, Europe's representation in the eighteen-year-old World Series will be Israel. Japan will be the first team, as a twelve-year-old team, also qualified. Won their, their zone championship back in Asia. Mexico, we got Spain coming for the first time also. So, they all gotta go through their region, their zone, and then they qualify to come to the, to our World Series here, held in Laredo.
And how long have you been putting together these tournaments?
I've been a volunteer for about thirty years. We started back in two thousand fourteen. We started with the regional tournaments. When we started hosting the, the Softball World Series, the first one was in two thousand seventeen, which we averaged about a hundred teams. I think the most maximum team we've hosted was about a hundred and twenty-four teams.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so, Mr. May, may I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
I know that when these tournaments are held annually, the nicest thing to see is that all hotels in Laredo are to capacity. Right, which generates hotel motel tax. Even cities outside of Laredo, like Zapata, Encinal,
Cotula.
Cotula, end up sailing, uh, sailing out of their hotels, because people have to commute. We don't get hotels on time here in Laredo. So, it boosts the area, it boosts the region, not just our city. And I think that's why it's, it's merited, and we've supported this tremendously through the advisement of management and CBB, because of that economic boost, not to mention restaurant expenditures and the tax paid at restaurants, and so on and so forth. So, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we approve the item.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, for your support.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. Fifty-five, Mayor, status report. The possible action by the utility department on the water, including, but not limited to, quality infrastructure, level status improvements, and any other matters incident there too.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the record, Arturo Garcia, Utilities Director. At this time, we're still at stage one. I'd also like to report that the Amistad is maintaining at thirty-nine point three percent. We are currently with these high temperatures. I know there's a lot of high use of water for irrigation yards, but I'm still recommending we stay in stage one, but possibly later in the, through the summer, we may move to stage two. Our residuals are being maintained, so water quality is, is good. Also next, I'd like to report, recently, there was an incident along McPherson and Sondera Drive, where a bus fell through one of our trenches. And it happened on June seventh. Staff had to repair a leaking valve in the area, and temporary asphalt patch was placed. On June eighth is when this incident occurred, where a bus fell through that patched area. And this was caused by a rain event that had occurred the previous evening. It softened the area. The soil lost its bearing capacity, so that caused the bus to fall in. At least the material, our water line was re-inspected and confirmed that no damage or leak existed, none was found. The final concrete patch is being made on this location. This is just to show the pictures of what had happened there, how the site looked. And again, it's the rain that caused the problem there in the area. It was a concrete valley gutter that was placed there, but the area had a temporary patch, and the store, the rain is what caused that event. This is what the area looks like now. It's being repaired, and like I said, the concrete patch is being prepared. That's all I have for you.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If I, if I may, yes, and Mr. Garcia, thank you. I know we spoke about this, the day that this happened. And I know, I know you mentioned, uh, the rain is a cause, the, you know, and the irrigation systems, you know, in the north side of town, there's a lot more irrigation systems, of course, and is it, or, can you just elaborate a little bit more? Because I, I've talked to the property owners that are right in front of there. Obviously, very scary situation for the kiddos. Glad nobody was hurt, but can we just elaborate a little bit more on, you know, the rain was the cause? Because we're, you know, we, we'll rain again, so what, um, so, how, how, what risk are we throughout the rest of the city, this, near this part of town? Like, what, um, what can we do besides, you know, cross our fingers that this won't happen again?
Well, we are vigilant. We go around, as we get complaints of areas that are soft or issues that we have, we try to address them quickly and immediately. We patch those areas, temporary patches, and let the ground settle and compact itself. Once that is done, we go back and make a permanent repair on, on, on the location. It's not something that happens all the time. I know sometimes some of your gravity sewers may, we see settlement that happens. When we start seeing that on the surface, we go out there and investigate those areas. But it's not something that happens all the time. This just happened, that we finished our repair, prepared a temporary patch, and then the rain came in, and it just, it was a low point, all the water collected there. Some of the areas where we have irrigation, over-irrigation, some of those areas do get soft, but it's rutting that happens. There's usually no utility involved, it's just the, the area, the pavement gets soft. And I know Public Works goes out there and either installs a valley gutter, concrete, and patches those areas to try to help move that drainage runoff or irrigation runoff. But we try to address them as those complaints come in. But it's something that, if the public notices areas where standing water for long periods of time, report them. We'll, we'll go investigate, find out if there's a utility nearby, if it's a water or sanitary sewer, and we'll, we'll take care of those issues. So, I need the public's input.
Yeah, right, and, and just to clarify, on June seventh, you mentioned you went, uh, was that, we were out there that day? That was due to a, to a call?
Yes, there was a call of a leaking valve, we saw water in, in that initial picture. As you can see, that valve, there's water coming out of that valve box. That was a leak that had occurred. So, because of that leak, we had to go in there and repair that.
Right, so that was done on the seventh, and then just, um, looking, and looking back, and I know, it's, I know it's Monday morning quarterbacking, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty. In retrospect, would it have been, and I'm just asking as an honest question, would it have been wise to close that area off, I mean, if this hap, if these types of leaks happen, you know, to let it dry before allowing transportation on, on that, on that area?
Hindsight, yes, I agree with that. Putting back even a steel plate just to keep the area passable. But some technology that I'm wanting to use in the future is to where we monitor leaks and react, not be reactive, but proactive, and identify those areas where we're having issues. Or maybe we could have prevented this and taken care of it earlier. But that's technology that I'm trying to bring in to be able to monitor our pipelines, to address some of these.
And I'm guessing you, that technology you're requesting in the next budget?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Didn't we talk about this previously in last year?
Regarding the leak detection?
Yes.
Yes, right now, I'm assessing, there's two vendors that I'm reviewing, and looking at their programs to assess what, which technology we want to bring into the city.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to piggyback off of that, I, we, we talked about the PIG, right? It's, it's the, is that what it's called, the PIG? Is that, is that the one?
The PIGging of lines, that's where we check the internal structure of the pipes.
Because we already talked about that one. You haven't, we haven't started doing that yet?
We are doing, right now, what I have been doing is our PRV's maintenance, and we're also getting ready to do our valve and hydrant maintenance programs, that we're assessing the different programs that are available out there, and...
Well, because like, this bus falling in this hole, um, you know, the kids could get, you know, hurt. So, if you put a temporary patch, was there anything there to notify the public that this was like a sensitive area that was gonna be worked on again? Or what is the meant, like, why do we put temporary patches and then come back and fix them? I, I, or instead of putting cones or blocking it off as a safety area? Because the bus is, you know, gonna go there, and, and if we have these sensitive areas all, all around the city, then how, how does the bus driver know whether or not this is a temporary patch or dri, or, you know? And it seems like it, it, it's like a recipe for disaster.
I understand your concern. We go back there, we patch the area. Temporary patch means we're just gonna come back later to put the permanent pavement. What happened that night is that it rained, and it softened the area, so the soil got weak. We had to go back in there, remove, and verify there was no damage happen in that location. But typically, we, the, the areas are sound. It's just that the rain event, everything that happened, was kind of like, it's just an incident that happened with the rain, rainfall.
Would it be fair to say, Mayor, thank you, I'm sorry. Would it be fair to say, moving forward, when these temporary asphalt patches are placed consistently across the city? I mean, because, sure, we don't get a lot of rain here, but it's gonna happen, so, in the future, and is it gonna be a new policy, I guess, for utilities that anytime a temporary asphalt patch is placed, and that there'd be kind of a restriction? Or do you think that would be over, over burdensome, over, overreacting to this? I'm, what's the, what's the balance?
We'll assess the, the area, if it's a heavily traveled area, I won't open it up until we know that it's compacted and safe to travel, because we don't open areas up until it's safe to travel. We don't leave it, if we notice that it's a problem area, we'll court it off and not allow traffic over. It's just that, at the time that they finished that work, it was safe. It's just what happened is, we had the rain come in, and it softened the area up.
I guess it's not safe, like, I, you know, it's, it's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say. It's, if, if, if rain could cause it, then it's probably not safe. I mean, I get it, we don't live in London or Seattle, but still, shouldn't we just be on the safe side, and just, if it's gonna rain that night, then we should, and then that would be an issue? We should just not have it accessible?
I can evaluate the process, and, and, and the thing that I'm coming back with is maybe putting a steel plate over those areas to make sure nothing does fall in.
Okay.
Especially in heavily traveled areas.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mayor, ma'am?
Go ahead.
I have a question regarding the, again, the, the use of, of opening up spigots in order to control for nitrification. We come back to this often, right, that that's just part of the process. Is there a way for you to investigate some options that we have, maybe to recapture that water, so that it isn't just a wasted resource? Nitrification is here with us. It's an important part of the care, I understand that. We, we, public health comes first. But at the same time, we're dumping precious resource. And so, if there is, or perhaps some other city has figured this out, a way to capture some of this water and, and have it for other use, instead of it just being tossed?
Yes, I'm always trying to see what other communities are doing. I'm trying to see what is, what is the most feasible, and that won't create too much of a cost on us, because it is gonna require labor and use of equipment. So, I need to see and prioritize. Right now, my priority is to maintain that quality.
Right.
And it's just a matter of identifying what we can do. I know sometimes what we're doing, we're directing it back to our water features, parks, ponds, areas that we can use it, utilize it. So, it's just a matter of developing a plan. I know some other communities, what they're doing is they're using it to water yards, wherever I have an access to an area that I can water a yard or a field, we'll try to do that.
Could you provide a report in, in, you know, may, maybe not next councilman meeting, but the one, the following one, to see, so that we can see some of the options and some of the costs we might incur from actually proactively choosing to participate in something?
Yes, we can, I can provide that to you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to add, we've brought this up many times already, as far as like reclaiming that water, and when we've talked about the reservoirs being, you know, levels decreasing, and how we get our water, and our water goes, the water that we're pumping down the drain isn't benefiting our community. It's going to other communities. And if we have that water, and we've already treated that water, and acquired that water, and have that water in our possession, then it doesn't make sense to let that water just flush down the drain without getting some use out of it.
Correct.
And we've talked about this before, and maybe it does have a cost, but are we really looking at the amount of gallons that we're wasting by pumping them down to see, you know, if, I mean, because water's a valuable resource.
Yes.
And we're just flushing it, and we're not making efforts, and we've talked about this before, and there's technologies out there that exist. And so, we were talking about items today that we've spoken about many, many times, yet we've decided that water's a priority in our community, and it doesn't seem like the timeline that we're getting solutions or options is in line with the urgency of the situation at hand.
Okay, I understand your concern, and I can provide a summary of how much we're flushing and the different points that we're flushing. Because I, what I need to be able to do is to have different facilities to collect this water. But I can address that to you at, at a workshop, just regarding that water that we're...
Because I think we spoke about having to buy a, a, a truck for like ten thousand dollars or something?
That's the nodeys where we recirculate the water. That's something that we can do to reduce the volume of water that we're gonna flush, but we still need to flush to be able to get some of these dead ends.
But it might be worth that investment?
Yes, no, that's one of the options. I still have that available for use if we have a situation where I need to preserve that water. And if, if the drought situation gets worse, then I'm gonna implement those requirements to where I need to circ, you know, filter out and flush that water with the nodeys system.
And Mayor, can I just ask one? Can you just remind the public, um, since of our, the stage that we're in, and what does that mean in terms of water use for them, irrigation? Because I see a lot of water just kind of going down the street, and a lot of complaints from homes and water businesses, like, in, around town, where the water's just like flowing into the street. Are there watering days and times that we're supposed to be adhering to right now, just to remind the public?
Okay, currently, we're in stage one, everything is voluntary. Okay, when we go to stage two, that's when we make it the mandatory requirement, where the even odd requirements come in, where they're watering three times out of the week. So, it's just a matter of what stage we're in. But right now, it's voluntary. We try, we're promoting education to, you know, be wise on your water use, irrigation, don't waste water. And we try to issue notices. We, we go out and issue notices to people. If we see broken irrigation heads, we go early in the morning to make sure, and notify people. Maintain irrigation systems, because that's typically where we see the problem, especially with these hot days, we're seeing a lot of waste.
The public can help by calling three-one-one if they see water coming from a location?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll send someone out there.
Thank you.
Right, anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve item fifty-six, unless the auditor has anything new to report to the council. She's acknowledging she does, so we'll hear from her.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Tina Rodriguez, internal auditor. I am here to present for you, uh, for your approval, the report, the review of arrest and booking process regarding the escape incident of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. That was sent to you, actually for the past two Friday, in the Friday packets. It was sent to you and in addition, the summary as well. And if you have any questions, please.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Motion, motion to approve?
Second.
I have, I'm, I have, sorry, I have comments.
Second for discussion.
Motion second for discussion.
I thought we were bringing this with the one that Mr. Neb had done with the, um, outside investigation, the outside council investigation.
That was, uh, conducted by, uh, me with the outside, uh.
But why aren't we gonna bring both of them together? Cause I know we, we had an outside council, which was, uh, Chief Torres.
Right.
I thought we were gonna bring them both together, not separate.
Well, that was completed and I gave the results to Mr. Neb, but.
And we bring this one back once Mr. Neb is, is back?
Well, the memo was written, so I, I can provide that to you directly if you want.
Okay, but I want for the public to be informed as well.
Okay.
So I want both of them to be brought together.
Okay, that can be done.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That was the only one.
Question. For your questions, no? All right, thank you.
So we're, we're approving, I mean, so just putting water, I guess, we're approving this, it can come back? Or I don't know what we're doing?
My motion is to bring it back with, with the outside council once Mr. Neb is, is here. Since he was the one who requested that outside council.
Is that your recommendation?
No.
Apparently there's a motion on the table.
That's fine, we have.
I would overrule the motion if there's a second.
There was a second, you seconded it.
So a new motion would trump the original motion?
You're, you're, you're taking out.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see if that's legal's advice and recommendation, if it is, so we can proceed that way. Or we just approve this right now and then bring it back, that's what I understand, what we're doing.
The other investigation is completed, so if you wanna bring them both back next time is fine. Or you wanna do this one first and the next one, the next meeting, that's, that's fine as well. Both are.
Prove this one, both of them.
Yeah, the, the motion, this one, this one is to approve.
So I withdraw my second for the classification.
Mayor, ma'am?
Go ahead.
So the report that you found, the, the audit report was very complete. And it seemed as if you're satisfied with the recommendations that were given to the police department, um, that there was some disciplinary action to the officer who did not follow procedure in detaining this suspect. And, um, that the, the certification is that, that there's satisfaction with how the police have responded to this incident.
Yes, and, uh, most of the report was the recommendations to, uh, their policies and procedures that they need to be updated.
And those have been accepted and, and will be implemented? Okay, so I, I don't, I'm sorry?
I'd say, Mayor, not implemented, but amended, I'm assuming the chief is working on correcting all those policies.
They're, I'm sorry, they're being implemented.
Honorable Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, first of all, I wanna say thank you, uh, for coming in and taking a look at everything. Uh, obviously the report was very, was very thorough. Uh, the policy, uh, related to, uh, how we handle prisoners was, uh, put out immediately after that. And so we did address that immediately. In addition to that, um, we did talk to, we've been talking to the patrol officers about complacency. Because ultimately at the end of the day, stuff happens. I mean, we have numerous arrests that occur very frequently. So, uh, we did hear, um, the recommendations of the auditor. There is no policy for notification of the mayor and council or even management for that matter, when there's an incident. And, and ultimately, um, we've been doing different things as a matter of practice. And so ultimately, as you read in the report, there was no, no foul on, on any of the members of my organization, including myself. And it was given to you in your Friday packets twice for you to read. In addition to Chief Torres coming out to visit with us and he has, uh, that.
Mayor, if I may, I, I have a memorandum, uh, that I prepared, uh, for, uh, Mr. Neb and, and for council. If you wanna go read it into the record or you want me to present it next time, it's up to you, but.
My motion on the table is to bring it back together regarding what the findings were, just so the public can be aware since it was something that, that I brought up to the, to the public. Uh, so I'd rather have both of them together, um, once Mr. Neb is back.
Here, just a comment. Go ahead.
We have a motion, but go ahead and comment. Um, grab the mic, please. Chief, as you mentioned, um, it's nothing in policy to notify us, management or the mayor. But the public certainly has a right to know when there's somebody out there that's escaped from being in custody. That's the only issue that I certainly have with this, with this incident that occurred. PSA should have been put out, public information officer should have put that out over and over and over. And I have family that live blocks away from the police department and they weren't notified. Uh, there was a school right by there and they weren't notified either. An officer, an officer showed up there, an officer showed up there.
No, they were notified and it's in the report and it's very thorough, council.
Yes, yes, I, I, I take that back. They were notified, but fact of the matter is that the public wasn't notified. And that would, that, that's an issue with me. Um, I, I think we should have done more. He wasn't apprehended right away, it took a couple of days, I think it was. Um, that's just something that we need to seriously consider to be able to put that out there, push that out there, forward it to, to our public. And that's one thing that I, I, I would certainly recommend.
If I may address that?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I can say this, there's a lot of arrests that happened, there's a lot of people that run away from police. You're a police officer, as you're aware. And we do have individuals that run from us and that get away from us. And there's, there's also reasons that the PIOs don't. I mean, I've had them a little bit more forthcoming with, with text messages. For, I feel like I think we're more recently putting out a lot more information. For example, there was an incident that occurred at, uh, at the mall, at the game place, at, at the mall. Uh, and some balloons popped and it came out that there was a shooting there. If we would have started sending out alerts to all of you, we would have panicked also the public.
Right.
So there's gotta be a balance and the balance is there. The, the report is very thorough, people do get away. And, and ultimately they, they get away, we put them in custody in the back of the patrol car. Sometimes they'll get out, the officers make mistakes. And then I handle them administratively, at least while I've been here at PD. I understand your concern about alert, alerting the public and it's a very legitimate concern. But we don't over, we don't wanna over tell them every single thing. We have arrests all the time and people run from us all the time.
Right.
All the time. And they're running around in the neighborhoods and, and they're running from, you know, you've been on.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. No, I understand that a hundred percent, chief, and we're not gonna put everything out, obviously, I understand that. If he's caught within an hour, she's caught within an hour, I, I completely get it. But when it's been days, that's where the issue comes in.
We did put out a BOLO. We did put out a BOLO to law enforcement agencies that help us arrest individuals. At the end of the day, you know, I certainly hear your concerns as a council and I appreciate them. And as a director, I'm, I will follow the direction of the manager, which is let's. So you're, you'll continue to be notified, uh, of different things, uh, certain things, the public. We don't wanna alarm them on.
Sure, no, I understand some instances.
And, and the charge of this person aggravated assault with a deadly weapon. It was a vehicle, not a gun or anything like that. And it was related to an accident that occurred at a different time. And so this person was never a threat to the community at large, at all. And so we're gonna go and alarm the public over somebody that's not a threat to the community. I have a concern with doing that for that purpose. However, ultimately at the end of the day, policies are policies. Uh, and, and you all are the policymakers and you can give us direction as to what you want to know and, and we will abide by it. I don't wanna overly alarm the public for things that, again, you know, it, at the end of the day, a second part of this, and I wanna bring us to this, since we're talking on this topic. The officers did a great job, they swarmed the area immediately. There was more than, what was it, fifty-two patrol cars that's, that swarmed the area? It's a lot of people and they went to all those businesses immediately. So all the language that was going around, that all these places were, we even watched that inmate on camera go away from any of those places. And it's all in the report, that they weren't even going towards the daycare, they weren't going towards Harmony. We knew that they were away from the area. And the officers were, I even had a chief officer in the watch directing.
Right.
So ultimately, the system worked, the officer made an error, he came to see me. I asked him, officer, what do you think is fair? How do you think I should treat this? And he told me, give me a suspension of three days, sir. And I did, and that suspension included training ultimately at the end of the day. So he was treated with dignity and respect. I commend all the officers that did a great job with the response. And ultimately, uh, we were investigated by our internal auditor. She gave you the report twice and Chief Torres came in and also found no violation.
Right, no.
So at the end of the day, if you wanna bring it back to the next meeting, it's up to you, but I'm telling you what it is.
Right, right. And, and I understand the report, I read the report. Um, the, the issue I have is you keep saying, or you stated that he was no threat to the public.
Correct.
We're not mental health professionals by any means, no police officer is. So at a certain point, people snap and that's when problems happen. That's when a lot of issues happen. So we can't say that for definite, that he deal with, he was, he wasn't a threat to the public.
At large.
And that's where I have that little issue with. If he has absconded for more than a certain amount of time, there's an issue. The public needs to be made aware of because we don't know his mental status at that particular point. That, if, like I said, just, just the amount of time is I have an issue. An hour, two hours and he's caught, she's caught, that, that's perfectly fine. But if you're talking about a couple of days, we don't know because of what he's already committed, where his mental status is at and that's, that scares me.
And that's the job of the director of the organization and that's the job of the patrol officers out there to make sure that, uh, we are taking care of the public. He was not a threat to the public at large, maybe to that person that he got into an incident with, uh, for the most part. So I wanna make that clear if I may.
Yes, yes.
Out of, out of an abundance of respect, I wanna make that clear. And the second part of this, we had a chief come in from outside that evaluated this whole thing and found no issue. And at the end of the day, it comes down to what I'm reporting to you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
So I am not an expert in law enforcement. I know nothing about what procedures should be followed. But I think that overall, and it's your judgment, right? You are the chief and you call the shots. But to me, it sounds kind of contradicting when we say there was no danger, but we deployed fifty-plus units, right? So if he wasn't of that danger, why not ten, why not twenty? Fifty is a lot, it's a lot of units.
If I may?
And so.
Can I address?
I, I wanna finish my, my thought real quick. So that's just one observation of mine, chief. And again, you may have some sort of, uh, ratio that you follow, I don't know, so you may be, that's your discretion. But I think that just to add to what Councilmember Gutierrez is mentioning, maybe he wasn't a threat that day. But then when it became two, three days, I don't know exactly what was the, um.
All three days.
Three days, then I think that that's where it does become a concern, right? He wasn't found that same day, then not only the BOLO, but people in the public, if you see this person, right? Turn him over because if he committed what he committed or did allegedly to his significant other.
It wasn't to his significant other.
It was to a not, unknown person?
Somebody else.
Okay, um, then even to add, you know, more to it, he can do anything else, right, to anyone. Or at the same time, I would assume that as a law enforcement agency, you'd also have to worry about his well-being, right? And we don't know if he would have access to a gun, could have committed suicide, could have done something else, right? And that's just my brain thinking, I may not be thinking like an officer. I, again, am not an expert in law enforcement. But what was troublesome to me was, I think, the protocol in line of communication, chief, when you were asked, um, what happened? And you gave us information on the record asserting what had occurred. And then the next day, it happened to be something completely different, right? And that's where I think we looked like we didn't really have the situation under control, at least in a law enforcement perspective, because on the record, something was said. Next day, the narrative was changed through your PO's office completely different, right? We were told he was apprehended right there and then, then we found out, oh no, he wasn't, it was three days later. The school wasn't notified, oh no, yes, it was notified. Oh no, an officer went in asking if they saw the guy, so, or, or the suspect. And that was interpreted as notification. You know, so there was these back and forths, right? That I think the public learned through a council meeting, that I think, to me, is the only observation I wanted to make, that when we don't have, I guess, accurate information at that time, that maybe we don't release anything, right? Because we're assuming, oh, the situation was okay, then we looked at, right? Changing narrative the next day, oh, it wasn't that same day, it was three days later. Oh, the school was notified and we said it wasn't. So that's what, I guess, bothers me a bit with the line of communication. Now, the other thought that came to mind, I have the utmost respect for Chief, um, uh, Torres, no relation, okay? Um, but I have the utmost respect for him. The only issue I have is that if the auditor has gone on record saying there's policies that need to be corrected and you from day one have told us the policies in place are not the best and I'm working on correcting these, then why would we bring a chief who's worked under that same administration and previous administrations with those same policies to come and identify if there's any issues when he himself was a chief or deputy chief or assistant chief, I don't know what his title is? Um, and those deficiencies were already present, as identified by you, as identified by Chief Trevino when he came in, as identified by the auditor now, doesn't make sense, right? Because he was part of that team that's, has deficiencies identified. And that's what puzzles my interpretation of the investigation. That's not on you, right? Because you did not choose Chief Torres to, to do this. And again, um, utmost respect for, for chief. And I think he knows a lot of law enforcement and whatnot, but I'm hoping that maybe he identified and said, yes, there's a deficiency in procedures and policies and he just didn't say, oh, everything's fine, right? Because if you've identified those deficiencies and so has the auditor, who's not a law enforcement officer, then we've got a, a gap in between those three judgment calls, right?
Yes.
But that's, that's what I wanted to address.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Let's go ahead.
I have the mic, I have, no, I have it.
Well, I, I'm addressing.
Yeah.
The reason there was so many people involved in this, fifty, fifty-two, it's in the report, right?
Uh, to clarify, it was forty-one.
Forty-one. Plus the people inside the building that were looking at cameras and all of this, all right? There was a shift change and then there's, uh, unmarked vehicles also. And they, they left into their cars and they went looking immediately. That's why the response was so large. Tried, do you wanna try to get him as soon as you can before he leaves and you can't get him? So there was a shift change, there was unmarked, uh, plainclothes officers. And so that, that was what was going on related to that, sir. So I wanted to, to point that out. Uh, as far as the, the policies, I think that the organization has excellent policies and they're constantly being updated. And, and if I could ask the city attorney to, to read to you the, his, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's a motion on the table, like I said, from outside council. First of all, one question, I have, I have the mic there. My question is, is it on charter where at least city manager needs to be notified? Is there something on charter? There's nothing on charter, okay. Second, that's why I'm saying, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, chief. I'm just saying if I brought up this concern, that I had that council meeting and Mr. Neb brought in an outside council with, with Chief Torres and I, and the, uh, internal audits came in, I rather, my motion is to rather wait for Mr. Neb to come in and have whatever Chief Torres found with whatever, to see if it com- compares to whatever internal audits came in with. And that mean, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, I'm not saying the report is right or wrong, I'm not saying anything of that. It's just my motion that if an outside council came in, brought in by our city manager, that he's not present at the moment, I'd rather wait to bring in those two reports to the public for transparency and for that they can be aware that it was taken care of. So that's my motion.
I have a point of order. So the motion to approve the, amend the item is. So, the motion to approve the item is the first motion that was made.
The second was taken back. So, there is no second on that one. And then if Councilmember had the floor and she made a motion, I don't know whose second that... Has anyone seconded your motion?
What was the motion?
And Mr. Mayor?
My motion was, I'm sorry. The motion was to wait for our city manager to come in and be present, since he was the one who brought in the outside council, which was Chief Torres, so we can have both reports, internal audits and the outside council that city manager, Mr. Joe Neb, requested. That's my only motion.
And Mr. Mayor, my point that I'm trying to make to mayor and council is that the item's up. We've talked all about it, and he can address that other part, and Mr. Neb's aware of both. So it's a, I mean, you've heard it. If you want to bring it back again, we're going to go through this whole thing again, and I'm fine with it. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we're telling you already, the public is watching, and we're being transparent.
All right. Let's not, before we go on, let's not miss the point. The point is that there's a concern, and there has to be some kind of modification, or some type of procedure done. That is the point. And we shouldn't be talking back and forth that it was done, it wasn't done. Let's get to the point. If we need to do something, move forward, let's do it. That's the bottom line. That's it. Whether nobody's fault, or whatever, we need to make sure that we move forward. And the motion was to bring it back? Is that your motion?
Bring it back, once Mr. Neb is in, so we can compare both the outside council he requested and whatever the internal audit, internal auditor's found.
Okay.
That's my motion.
And the point is to move forward and get some solution. Go ahead.
So, I would just like to comment that I am very comfortable with the police chief and the experts on the police force being the ones to make the decision when they feel like there is a threat to the community. Because I do believe that over creating a threat environment is not healthy. You can create negative impacts. And I think that the law enforcement professionals should be the ones to determine when a notification needs to go out to the general public, and we don't need to be second guessing them. I was, in the very comprehensive audit report that you prepared, I was, it was good to hear that a BOLO was issued, that law enforcement did step in, that they had the search that they had, and they were pursuing all the channels to make sure that our community was safe. In my, in my opinion, since we've all given our own opinions, it did not seem that the suspect was a threat to the public at large, as was mentioned before. But I fear that if council decides to step in and assume responsibility for what is a threat to the public and what is not, we overstep what our knowledge is. So I just would like to point that out, that I'm happy that the police department is in charge of those decisions. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, the city attorney's prepared to let you know what Chief Torres said, because, go ahead.
I have the memo, I can read it to y'all, but the motion is to bring it back.
Is there a second for the motion?
Do we have a second? We know the motion already?
Then can I bring it back in an item on the next council?
May, mayor?
Okay, I'll do that.
If there's one second, could I ask for the attorney to go ahead and provide us with that additional report of what the outside investigator found?
Yes, we could, if you want to provide that.
You may just read it.
We'll have a problem with that.
The process was that I retained through the city attorney's office Chief Torres to do this investigation, because he is someone that knows the LPD protocols through his own experience, that we shortcut some of the timeframe, and as opposed to bringing someone from outside of Laredo and paying for additional expenses. So, he provided a report, he did not want to come up here and be cross-examined, in essence. So he provided me the report, and in turn, I provided a summary to, executive summary to Mr. Neb. So, for me to, Mr. Neb, an arrestee escaped from a police station on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, but was apprehended without incident two days later. A BOLO be on the lookout alert was issued to other law enforcement agencies. However, no notification was provided to the city manager or city council regarding the episode. The city attorney's office contracted with former Assistant Police Chief Jesus Torres to conduct an investigation into what notice, if any, the interim police chief, Steve Landine, was required to provide to the city manager or city council. Chief Torres' investigation report is a protected attorney-client privilege communication. The following is a summary of his findings. Bullet point one, there are no established protocols, policies, or procedures that specify what notice needs to be provided from the police chief to the city manager or city council regarding the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three incident. Bullet point two, any notification regarding the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three incident would be at the discretion judgment call of interim police chief Landine, but consistent with customary practice. Bullet point three, with the benefit of hindsight, notice to the city manager could have provided more situational awareness to city management in order to anticipate questions regarding the matter. Bullet point four, communication requirements of critical incidents are recommended to be delineated by the city manager to the police chief. Next bullet point, communication channels are recommended to be streamlined between the police chief and the city manager to facilitate transfer of reports of critical incidents. And last bullet point, no disciplinary action is recommended against interim police chief Landine. That was the end of the memo.
All right, thank you. All right?
Mayor, Mayor? Zone. On the policy book, page fifty-four, section B, it says, "When the city manager receives important information about any subject of priority interest, he or she immediately shall contact the mayor and city council members." That doesn't apply here?
Well, again...
And that's on the policy book?
The information was not conveyed to the city manager, because there was no policy that required it to the city manager. And in turn, that would trigger city manager, if he received any critical information, he would turn it over to you all.
But city manager wasn't advised either.
No, he wasn't advised, that's why he didn't provide any information to you. But there's no policy in place, and that's what Chief Torres was recommending, that maybe there be some communications as far as, you know, what are the critical incident reports that the city manager would want to hear from the police?
Or for any other department.
Or any other department. I'm sorry, I analogize the army, because the army, every commander has the CCIRs, you know, critical, commander's critical information reports, that he or she wants to know, like, you know, soldier being injured, something happening, you know, loss of a weapon, that goes to the commander.
So we go back to the same thing that Chief Landine didn't think this was important, to notify city manager. That's why, I don't care about us being notified, but...
There's no policy in place, no requirement in place, so it was just at his discretion based on customary practice. So that's what was...
Do we have a policy in place now? Because we've been getting information from, since that point on, we're getting information like through checks and our PIO, so...
I can address that, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I've asked my PIOs to step it up, to flood you with information. And that's why you're getting more, because I asked them to do that.
No, they already, they would do it before. They would do it...
Well, they're doing it more now.
They would do it before, that was my concern, that that was the only incident where nobody was notified. That's why I brought it up.
And if I may, we even had an escape that just occurred last week.
Yes. And we got, the thing is, we've always gotten them. You know, ever since I came in in November, and prior to that, my husband was in council, and I remember his phone would blow up, and there was all sorts of information. And even you, being in a fire department.
Yes.
That's why it was my concern, why this incident was not brought up. But we'll get into it more when Mr. Neb comes back. Thank you.
Any further comments?
So is there any action?
So we need to approve your report, because you're done with your...
Yes, I can just come and present it again.
So motion to approve the auditor's report.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Item fifty-eight B. Status update on the process to appoint new members to the City of Laredo Charter Revision Committee in order to review and recommend any appropriate changes to city charter and any other matters incident thereto. And I want to thank Mr. Valdez for providing council members. You'll see that you received some information about the procedures for setting up this committee and what the goals are, and if you would care to elaborate.
Mayor, also about this, Junior City Secretary for Seal Laredo, council members also. I left some general information with you. And right now, at this point, what I would request is that if council would please consider appointing your member for that committee, hopefully by the next meeting of July thirty-first, at least, and that way, we can start the process of having meetings. Right now, the charter is made up of twelve articles, and there's about a hundred sections total. Some articles have maybe two, three sections, some of them have sixteen, fourteen. And so what we're planning on doing, once we have the members appointed, we'll start having monthly meetings, and we'll address several articles and sections as we go about. And then maybe halfway, provide a report to council of how they're doing and what implementation, or what they're considering to implement at that process. And we're shooting for the Unified Election Day of November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, next year. I haven't spoken to the elections administrator, but I know that they're required to... And if you'll see, I added some sections of the state statutes to the election code. It's a duty to contract, so it's just a matter of pricing at that point. But that's the only date that they are, I guess, required to perform that duty for us. The other ones, it's an option for them. So we have a May Unified Election Day, but that wouldn't guarantee anything. And so I think this would give an opportunity of ten to eleven months for the commission to get together and make recommendation to council for consideration.
Mayor, I do think that with one year, that does give sufficient time. It seems as if Mr. Valdez is in agreement, that a year would be sufficient time for the committee to get together, review the charter, and be able to propose changes. By putting it on the November fifth date, the general election date, we ensure that there will be more voters voting on these amendments, if there are any, or any revisions that we made, that the committee might find to recommend. It will make that election ballot a little bit more cumbersome, but if we are trying to find a way to communicate to our public that the charter, that they should be looking at the charter, and it's important for the public to have knowledge of the revisions we're proposing, then this is a way to reach the largest audience, if we include it on a November election ballot, especially with the presidential election coming up.
Mayor, if I have a question? So, that being said, we will have a higher voter turnout, because it's Presidential Election Day, which is still not, we still need to make it even higher than it's been in the past, of course. But just a quick education for me, how has the, how's our, how's the city gone about educating the public on these charter amendments, as far as marketing goes? Because we also don't want people just, you know, going, they're there to vote for president, and then they just, you know, tap through and randomly select, you know, city charter stuff, so...
Once, I mean, mayor, once we, the council has decided what items will be placed on the agenda, at that point, then we promote it on our website. We ask the PIO also to do promotions through our Facebook and have links to where all the amendments will be, right? That council has approved. And then by law, we have to publish it in the newspaper also, so many days before the election, and we try to promote all of that, as much as we can. And we basically promote facts. We can't say, "Well, we'd like for you to vote in favor of this one, but not this." No, we have to provide, provide, and just the information, and then let the citizens decide what they want to do, right? And so we try to do as much as we can. We can look at advertising also at the time when we get to that point. That will probably be around next July. So that's why I ask if you all can really consider trying to name somebody for the next meeting. And if we have at least a quorum, the policy procedures says that the mayor appoints the chair and the vice chair. So if I see that everybody's appointing someone, then I'll make sure that there's an item for that agenda, so that the mayor can appoint the chair and vice chair, and we can start the process of having meetings as soon as possible.
May I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
So, just for clarification purposes, because I know at the last Charter Review Commission that we established, the mayor appoints the chair and vice chair, not from within our appointees, but he appoints two people, correct?
No, from the appointees, those appointed.
Plus who he appoints. So he appoints one?
There'll be total of nine.
Okay.
And of those nine, the mayor will choose the chair and the vice chair.
Two people from the appointees, including his appointee?
Including his. Yes, sir.
So I would just urge us all, because this policy, this procedure can move forward with a quorum. So the more quickly we get the quorum, then the more time they will have to look at these hundred articles and the work that needs to be done. And then also allowing for time to do the public notifications that need to occur.
And if, if, if they finish their work a little bit faster, we would have an opportunity to do a town hall somewhere in the community, or several places in the community, it just depends. Normally, we're always kind of rushing at the end, trying to get the amendments approved. But if we have enough time, we can also, you know, try to educate the community of what's going to be on the ballot. Since it's a presidential year, it's going to have even, I totally forgot that. We're going to have even more, you know, people to consider for their vote.
Mr. Mayor, may I read it?
Go ahead.
Another point of clarification, just for council's purpose, there's no restrictions as to who can be appointed to Charter Review Commission. It's not limited to your district constituents, and if they're serving on another board, you're not restricted from appointing them here, or you aren't?
Other boards, there's no restrictions as far as the Charter Revision Commission's concerned, as far as my understanding. But there are other committees or boards that do have restrictions. And so, if we can't...
But this one in specific.
Yes.
In other words, you can't appoint a PNZ representative to this board, because PNZ prohibits you serving on another board.
But this one doesn't, so...
But if you have an appointee in drug and alcohol, nothing prohibits you from appointing them here.
Exactly.
Just, I'm not, you know, just hypothetically thinking, so we understand it, and we can swiftly make the appointments.
Sure, exactly.
Mayor, if I may, is PNZ the only one that applies to?
Ethics.
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 It might be only those two, the ethics and PNZ.
And I think, Mayor, if I may add, if I'm not mistaken, also the Board of Adjustments.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a statutory board, I think.
Yes, Mr. Navarro is...
Yeah. Board of Adjustments, Planning and Zoning, and Ethics, I think, are the three.
Thank you.
Just a week.
All right. Council has any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much for all the information, and thank you for taking the time to prepare this for us.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda for businesses C two, a request under my sponsorship, a discussion with Possible Action to adopt an ordinance prohibiting the selling and distribution of e-cigarettes within a range of schools, childcare homes, and centers, including playgrounds, and any other matters incident thereto. I know that we've been seeing much more incidents where the youth have gotten access to e-cigarettes, and you see school boards and coalitions coming together to ensure that they explain the dangers, and try to, as much as possible, discourage our youth and our students from coming near e-cigarettes. The consequences that school board members, school principal and superintendents are seeing is that if a student takes a vaping device for an e-cigarette to school, then it affects their school record, disciplinary record, which in essence, then also affects their admission into colleges and universities, and so on and so forth. So I think it's important that they understand the dangers, and hopefully with that, they get discouraged from coming anywhere near an e-cigarette. But we see gas stations and vape shops making themselves much more available to the public. And I couldn't help but see, in my district, there's some, gas stations we have everywhere, but there's some vape shops opening near schools, daycares, and students can come into access to these devices easily. So my motion is simply to instruct staff to come back with a recommendation, to reach out to this coalition that I know the mayor is also actively participating in, along with the school, district board members, superintendents, and officials. And we come back with options as to how we can... And we come back with options as to how we can address this. Obviously, there's going to be grandfathered businesses. But my train of thought on this item is maybe within 100 feet from a school or a daycare center or a playground, you can sell these type of products, hoping that as far as they get away from these public places, we will decrease the accessibility to people that shouldn't have access to them.
Second motion, second. Okay, motion, second.
Mayor, if you'll accept an amendment to include some type of public education campaign, because ultimately, we need the public to, like you were saying, we need the public to understand what the dangers are, try to have parents be able to influence their children about what the dangers are. Also, unfortunately, the state of Texas has just passed a law that it seems as if the governor will sign, if he hasn't already, that prohibits municipalities from regulating items that the state does not regulate. And so if we are not able to find an ordinance that will pass muster, I think the public education campaign will be our best bet to try to curb and decrease the amount of e-cigarettes that are ultimately used in the community and especially by our youth.
Mayor, I'll accept the amendment. And I'll also add that we involve the Drug and Alcohol Commission in the process.
All right.
As amended. Motion is amended. In favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, my other item is discussion with Possible Action to draft a letter of interest offering incentives to DG Market stores in order to provide fresh food selections to food desert areas around the city, prioritizing in the downtown area. And it should have included the Mines Road, but my item wasn't amended as I requested. Then any other matters incident there, too. I do want to commend our Director for Economic Development, who has already started the process in reaching out since we first put this item on the agenda. And I'll give Miriam, Mayor, with your permission, for her to address this briefly before I make the motion I have in mind.
Council members, yes, just a brief update. I know that this item has been on the last, I guess, two council meeting agendas. We did reach out, we made initial contact with the DG Market. It was, it's a developer, pretty much, that is in charge of developing those particular stores in our area. So I'm hoping that we can establish a connection with them and see what their needs are and how the city could possibly assist in expanding their footprint in Laredo. And also addressing, and I do want to thank Dr. Tembran as well, because we've been communicating as well, identifying the areas that are in most need.
Mayor, this serves as a follow-up item to our DC visit when we met with the Agriculture Commission. And the vast discussion we had addressing the need of our food desert area, specifically in the downtown, we didn't discuss the Mines Road area. But I know that that's also a very highly populated area. And I'm not speaking for Councilmember Pettis here, but I know she sees that need to, as I've heard her discuss it. There's no Walmart, no HEB in the Mines Road. There's nothing that provides fresh produce, meat, quality foods other than locally owned meat markets, I guess, or convenience stores that offer these products as mom and pops. And I saw and read an article when I placed this item on the agenda, the city of Hebronville acquired a DG Market store. And they've been very successful. They provide fresh produce every day. They provide meats. They provide different items that you'll see at a Target market, but at a smaller scale, or at one of those small Walmarts that you see in the other bigger cities that we don't have here in Laredo. I think they're called Walmart markets. And if I'm mistaken in the conversations I've had with the director, there's some positive response to evaluate the market. But I would want for council to address and give the city manager the authority to try and offer some sort of reasonable incentive so that we can have these market stores attracted to investing in the downtown area and the Mines Road area and any other area or pocket that you all feel does not have the accessibility, right? It's unfortunate when we hear and see a residence from the Hamilton having to go to the Arkansas Cross Street, who is also threatening to close very soon. They have their building for sale. And use their, whatever little money they have on a hot dog or a burrito or a bag of potato chips and a soda, which runs, you know, $3, $4 for a Coke and $2, $3 for a hot dog. That's already $6 where they could have purchased a dozen of eggs, a gallon of milk, and maybe a loaf of bread, right? That would have lasted them a few weeks rather than on just one meal. But those are the issues that we see in these vulnerable areas that I'm hoping these type of stores would provide. And if we don't have to limit ourselves to the DG Market area, but anyone that is interested, and I specifically mentioned them because of their interest in Hebronville. And if you haven't been to Hebronville recently, for lack of better words, it's dead, right? And for them to have the interest of investing in a community like Hebronville really, you know, sparked that idea on, well, if they're willing to invest in Hebronville, where, you know, they do have Dollar Trees and Family Dollars that provide some of this, then why not areas that they would essentially profit from and also serve our community, like our downtown and Mines Road? So I'd like to make a motion to instruct the city manager to explore possibilities and authorizing the city manager to provide reasonable incentives to this developer, along with any other developer that is willing to invest through these chains and working collaboratively with our Director for Economic Development so that we can expedite the construction or development of these facilities in these food desert areas. And that we do it aggressively so that we can ensure that these pockets are served as we've been trying to serve them for the last couple of years.
All right, motion. Has it been settled?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sir. Go ahead.
So I also would like to see, I was, it was good to hear that Councilmember Torres is also extending this to other potential chains and stores. I think it would behoove us if we could offer this to our local small stores. I know that Meximart has now additional stores, Narvise. There are a couple of other local small stores that have fresh produce, that provide fresh meats. And I say that because, you know, DG Market stores in particular right now is under scrutiny for unfair wage practices, unfair labor practices, unsafe working conditions. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean that the store that would be coming in and franchised here would be part of that. But we need to be aware that that chain in particular is under review by the Labor Department. So I just want, if we're going, as was stated, if we can offer these incentives also to our local facilities that might have, if we could incentivize them to expand, that we include that in this economic development package.
I'll accept, Mayor, the amendment with a caveat that there's got to be a long-term commitment, right? Because usually you see mom and pops open up, take advantage of the incentive, and then there's no commitment because they want to see profit margins quick. And for those that know the market, the profit margin in meats is very small. And that's why they add all these other products to ensure that they have a balance. So I do not have a problem. I'm all pro-local, helping pro-local businesses, especially when we're providing incentives. But there's got to be a commitment, right? That they open for, that they remain open for X amount of months or years. And you usually see that bigger commitment coming from corporations, right? They can afford to have the losses until they establish, but yes, I will accept your amendment. I also want to amend my own motion to include for staff to update the NEZ to include these type of stores. And authorize the city manager to make that amendment to the ordinance so that it can come back as soon as possible. And that we also map out food desert areas so that we can ensure that the NEZ extends and includes these. That's my amendment as well.
Agreed.
Motion is amended.
Mayor, so I think this is a wonderful idea. I would like to propose perhaps, rather than, again, echoing Councilmember Sayarra, perhaps more of a corner store program instead of targeting just the DNG. And require, and also assuring that by contract with these incentives that there are fresh produce and vegetables every day. And then, again, including in this incentive program, our local farmers and vendors. That way, this is fair to everyone. And I would also request if the local food policy be engaged and involved in developing this program.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll amend my motion to include the Policy Committee.
Motion is amended. Go ahead.
Just to add, like for the Mines Road area, you know, we're developing. So I think if we designate the food desert areas and we say that this is a priority, does that give you the flexibility to be able to do, work out like some kind of 380 agreement or things like that with people that are interested in bringing this type of development?
So pretty much, and that's one of the points that I wanted to share with you all. The guidelines that the city adopted for this type of incentive programs, it's pretty much at the municipality level. So we have the power to.
Flexibility?
The flexibility to, you know, amend the current ordinances, the current guidelines that we have for either a chapter 380 or a 312 or any other incentive program. And to address some of the concerns regarding some of the, you know, wages and all that. It's pretty much a performance agreement as well. Incentive programs, that's what they do. It's a performance agreement to where, you know, both entities get into an agreement on the incentives and also the responsibilities that, you know, might be required, you know. Now, to your point regarding local, local stores, guidelines for those particular and incentives for those particular investments that are at a way lower level can also be included. And I think the NEC is one of the perfect incentive programs to where that can be adapted. I know the recent amendment restricts some of the bigger commercial property owners that want to take advantage of the program. But an amendment of that nature can definitely help move this initiative forward.
City Attorney? We do have a food desert map in existence already. We can, do you have it with you? We can share with you now or put it in a Friday package so you all know there is already a designated area and it does include some areas of the city.
Yeah, Mayor, just to add.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that the Dollar, I mean, I read an article that talked about Dollar General contributing to the food desert problem. So I know that Dollar General is probably good to, like, identify them as far as carrying fresh produce in their stores. I don't know if they'd be grandfathered in or we'd work with them. But I think incentivizing new stores. I think, I don't think the guidelines right now that you, that the Economic Development Department has allow that. So maybe Councilmember Torres may be modifying also to include bringing amendments to the economic development programs that are in place to include food deserts as a priority.
I'll accept the amendment.
Okay.
And it's one of the items that has been discussed as well at the Advisory Committee level, the need to review and amend not only our 380 guidelines, but 312, maybe the TERS as well, the policy. Going back to the locations and the areas that are considered food deserts, particularly downtown, and there are different items that need to be taken into account as well. It's not only the lack of access to fresh produce and grocery stores, but a lot of those certain areas also lack a way of transportation. I think in the downtown area, 38% of that particular demographics, they don't have a vehicle and they live, you know, within one mile, you know, from the closest grocery store. So I think it's just, I guess, to summarize, it's a, we need to identify, you know, what the different areas are when we reach to these investors or even local, just have a better understanding on the areas, the challenges and the opportunities for their market analysis, because that's a very important component of investors, you know, that are looking into.
Mr. Mayor, may I redirect?
Go ahead.
So I just came to mind right now. So there's existing Dollar Generals. And I noticed that in some communities, they've converted them because of incentives to DG Market stores and not just your typical Dollar Store and Family Dollar. And if you all recall correctly, there was a lot of criticism not too long ago how Dollar Stores, I mean, not to target, but like Dollar Trees, Family Dollars, and Dollar Generals are popping up a lot in very different communities. And they're multiplying like crazy. And how that in and of itself, not only does it provide an incentive, but it also provides a negative impact at the same time to communities, right? These Family Dollar Stores, because it creates the image as if there is no room for bigger investment other than providing Dollar Stores. And I remember that vividly as we were discussing this maybe two, three years ago, how Dollar Stores are coming, are popping up. And there's some communities that were limiting the amount of these Dollar Stores. But I think that if we could provide these stores the incentive, if they're already existing and they want to convert their stores, their corporate stores to market stores, that we also allow them to take advantage of whatever incentive you all come up with, right? And have that conversion of a Family Dollar that sells just canned goods and cereal to incorporate the meats, the produce, and fresh fruits and whatnot so that we can make these Dollar Stores offer much more services. And I know that the incentive is not very attractive for groceries because I've had conversations with HEB representatives, with Walmarts. It's a big loss, right? Sometimes if the produce doesn't move, are they non-perishable foods or frozen items? But that is where the incentive, I'm assuming, would help them convince their business mindset in our community. So I'm also amending that the representatives that you're in communication with also be offered the conversion incentive as well.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to point out that if these locations are not currently on the bus route, that maybe we can work closely with the El Metro Department to expand our bus routes and make sure that if there's going to be a location that's not currently serviced within reasonable walking distance, that we, that economic development maybe bring that back to us so we can work with El Metro on expanding the routes to include those locations.
And yes, that is our intention, to learn more about their business model and learn more about, you know, the different options that the city can have. And I guess that'll be the commitment from our department to make sure that we identify any possible venues to where we can help them make a decision to either expand or, you know, expand their footprint or convert some of the current stores that they are already operating.
Yes, go ahead.
And just one last thing, I wanted to include variety meats and all-seasons meat market in this discussion about local providers. And hopefully, the package will be attractive. So perhaps we can get some local interest in expanding.
We're adding also the Santos from Prontos, who have been investing in our community for the last, everybody.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
And ideally, with corner stores, it's about a 10-minute walking radius from your home, from your home. So I think that would be ideal to evaluate as well when looking at places.
Well, look at the different programs that the city already adopted and see how we can adapt them to the needs of the different type of investments that could possibly consider Laredo for this type of product service.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have motion, second. In favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, my item is next, D1.
D1.
Discussion with Possible Action on Creating a Resolution to Combat Human Trafficking and Raise Awareness of the Many Dangers Brought by Human Trafficking and Any Other Matters in There, Too. I brought this item up because Chief Alin and I were in a, in a training a few weeks ago, specifically addressing human trafficking. And it was certainly an eye-opener to both of us how much of a problem it is, not only in the city of Laredo, but the state of Texas and the United States. So it was identified that over 1 million people are being, not only trafficked, but being used for certain instances for businesses. So this is in particular, to get that resolution done, which I think legal has already worked on already, thank you for that. But to send it to the state of Texas. Um, but to send it to the state of Texas that the city of Laredo is behind this resolution and that we will do anything and everything possible to try and stop human trafficking. And it's more than anything else as well to educate the public, law enforcement and other industries. And like I said, particularly the 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 private sector, to let them know specifically indicators about human trafficking and when it's actually going on. And I say the private sector because that's a huge problem when it comes to the state of Texas. They're hiring these people and paying them way less than minimum wage. Sometimes it's for sexual favors and these women, young boys and young girls that are being trafficked and used for human labor or used for labor uh for these certain instances. And this is back goes back to cartels. So it's something that I I really feel strong about. I really think we need to do something about it. And the city of Laredo having a resolution to be behind it, I think speaks volumes. That's my motion.
Motion. All right, second. Go ahead.
So I would just like for us to be aware that um as terrible as the human trafficking problem is, and I do agree it's a terrible problem, it's being exasperated by the fact that we do not have an adequate immigration policy on a national level. And so it's wound up in this political rhetoric. How are you going to stop human trafficking? Okay, well, let's stop it at the border and stop people from coming in. That hasn't worked since the inception of our country. And I think we need to be careful that our stance against human trafficking isn't used to justify measures that are proven to not work, such as building a border wall. It was one of the justifications used to insist why we needed one. If you look at, and I've said this before, if you look at current migration numbers and where the illegal immigration is occurring, right now it is occurring in communities where there exists border wall. And Laredo is um the second least sector that's seeing human uh illegal immigration right now. Um, so it it's so easy to get hijacked because human trafficking occurs and the the abuse of laborers occurs because we don't recognize that migrants work in our fields. Migrants provide the fruit and vegetables that we eat every single day. That migrants are in construction um jobs and migrants are in meatpacking jobs. And the United States does not recognize the fact that those jobs are needed and we need labor and Americans are not taking those jobs. And then, of course, there's the confounding um aspect that if you have a a source of migrant labor, there's less incentive to actually offer these jobs at higher wages to Americans. So I just want us to be careful that we don't fall into the trap of being used as a political football, because we've seen it before. No one here would ever support human trafficking. What we need are adequate immigration policies that reflect the reality of how our economy works and the contributions that migrants make to it every single day, just like they've been doing for decades. I don't know how that is encompassed in a in the resolution, but that I just want to note that.
Mayor, if I may, that was certainly not my purpose. This has nothing to do with the wall. This has nothing to do with that whatsoever. This has to do with what's being done with humans, people, kids. That's what this is about, to be sure that the city of Laredo is behind stopping this. Council members from Austin, Texas called me and asked me to support it because they just did that several months ago. And that's something that I think the city of Laredo should stand behind specifically because we are in one city.
Motion second. Was there a motion?
Yes, the second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor, uh discussion with possible action directing management to explore the feasibility process and funding mechanisms, including any available available economic incentives for the construction of improvements along I thirty five north from the Manadas Creek wastewater treatment plant to include the expansion of sewer water and utilities, high speed internet and fiber optic cable in the Manadas Creek watershed to also include modernizing infrastructure of the Tejas Industrial Park to allow this area to keep up with modern market and service level demands and any other matters incident there too. Co-sponsored by council member Dr. Tyler King. Uh, so this this kind of tack, this would tackle two issues. And one is um this industrial park is in District Seven just north of the of the new Manadas Creek Water Treatment. But I don't know if people realize that they're still on a septic tank system because it was used to be kind of on the outskirts and we grew around it, but we didn't include it in updating their utilities in our growth. And so um there's also a need to expand water infrastructure north of the uh current high school that's there, United United High School. And so there's some interest from some private investors and entities that are interested in assisting with that infrastructure and working out some kind of agreement with the city to run that infrastructure north from the Manadas Creek, crossing over thirty five to give water and utilities on that side of thirty five, but at the same time would also allow us to expand our utilities and our sewer capacity in this already developed part of town to kind of bring that industrial park to, you know, the current city standards. And it would tackle both issues. And so uh my motion is to give management the um the directive to explore this feasibility, looking to see how an incentive package would work, what would be the terms and what would be the impact to us uh as a city.
Second. Second. Go ahead.
Mayor, um network staff this morning to be able to uh get some additional information and we can have some information for you. However, um one of the first things that we need to do is place these items into our C I P because as I understand it, putting in just the infrastructure for water and sewer is a thirteen million dollar process. That does not mean we're not going to do it. I think that that should have been identified a long time ago and put in our books so that we can start working towards it. Another thing that we also need to do is start to look for incentive packages like such such as the three eighty agreements. Uh, we we looked at a maybe a potential PID, what we said PID, we may may do um a TERS towards it. So what we want to be able to do is start sitting down with probably the invest, the property owners there, sitting down with them and saying, hey, would you be interested in in doing something like a TERS to be able to start funding it sooner than later?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We have an investor that's willing to put up the the to do, put up all the infrastructure and actually complete the infrastructure upfront without us having to come up with the money upfront. And then that's where the incentive would come in as far as like, how would we work this out with that investor? But they they told us, uh, we met with some Dr. Dr. King and I, and he may want to elaborate, but um they're interested in running that line to the other side of thirty five on their own, at their own expense and then possibly working out some uh increment reinvestment, recapturing, some kind of TERS agreement. And it would help this area because the property owners in this area right now don't pay sewer, but it would be bringing them into the sewer system, up upgrading this industrial park, upping everybody's property value and figuring out a structure for them to contribute towards the repayment of that and not have to pay for septic systems.
We'll be more than happy to meet with them and you'll provide me the name later on so we can go ahead and work it out.
It just if council would agree that this is needed and a priority, so management can can focus and work on that.
Go ahead.
I I just have a question um about the feasibility and um the incentives that would be given to this investor. Do we know, will we find out what those costs would be and and what um what ultimately the investor would be receiving in return for this this upfront of the costs for extending these lines?
So I guess that would happen at our initial conversation and there's a lot of announcements that need to be done behind the scenes on values of the properties and see if it makes sense for both of us and at what point. And we would definitely be bringing it back to you, mayor, uh for updates on this once we start going on it.
Yeah, all right, and mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And just and then maybe when you bring it back, you could bring back this kind of summary of the conversations you had and maybe uh a variety of an options, you know, option one, two and three to kind of see. One is a chapter three eighty, one being a TERS, one being a whatever else Miriam has up her sleeve. But yeah, just so we can have and kind of a cost breakdown of each to the city is, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the city, of course. So but we also want to make sure that this project happens uh quickly as we know growth uh in both of our districts going north um is happening rather fast. So um the I think the idea with this is to get it done as quickly as possible um as this development occurs. And so, yeah, it'd be great if you could bring back the options A, B and C and kind of a pros and cons of each.
City and the developer.
Yes.
Mayor, just to clarify, uh would the would the bounds of your of our preset ordinance allow this type of um project to qualify for the incentives that we've laid out?
Well, like Deputy City Manager mentioned, um I think we need to evaluate um the commitment that this particular investor is willing to do so that we can better identify what would be the proper, I guess, financing um tool that we can apply because at the same, e- every financing tool is different. A public improvement district, you know, um works very differently as far as how the funding is generated as opposed to Eters. Um, I think it'll be, my recommendation would be um to sit down and have that initial conversation with the developer that's interested in participating in the project. And at the same time, make sure that um with our internal um utilities department that whatever they're willing to put on, uh, you know, um assist with the project, that it truly, truly, um, I guess, encompasses the plans of the utilities um department to avoid what should have been done probably twenty years ago, just so that we can keep up with whatever future growth the area will be experiencing and and make sure that um the commitment that we possibly get from the from the investor, that it matches the 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 plans and and the priorities of the city as far as um utilities.
All right, call for a question or any other comments? All right, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Thank you.
Mayor, um discussion with possible action on the avocado festival and any other matters incident there too. Um, so when we mo- motioned to pass for the avocado festival, it was around the pandemic time, so it was hard to to get that going. Um, I know we've had other priorities since, so just kind of want to make sure that we get that project back on track, whether it be twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. But I think right now with the standing that we have in the market as like the only port that does the fresh inspections the way that we do them, the avocado festival was kind of created with that, capitalizing on that standing that we have and trying to highlight our port as a good, a port for fresh produce. So I I kind of think that um the planning went, you know, stalled out. But want to see if we can have an update and then maybe this council can decide when we want to reset the date for and how much time we would need.
May I be heard, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think it's also important that um in preliminary conversations I've also had with Eileen that we include the municipality of Uruapan Mitrocan, which we've met with multiple times um in this festival. They've done a lot for Laredo and trying to get a lot of their um produce come through our port rather than we would see it sometimes divert through California and with the relationships that we've established through sister cities. And the visits we've made to them, we've seen an increase on that and also the establishment of Mission Produce in our city, uh which also got national attention. I think merits exactly what Councilman Perez um had requested previously, although because of the pandemic and different things occurred. I think it's perfect timing for us to reevaluate this and that we also um sit down and meet with the Uruapan um delegation um so that the mayor can also establish that communication since previously it was done under um Mayor Sines. But I think that neither time he attended, I think I attended in representation of the city. And I think it'd be important, mayor, that that you establish that um relationship with that municipality, being that it is a capital of the avocado in in Mexico and the important role it plays um there. Um additionally, I think that uh, did you make a motion already?
Not yet.
Well, do you want to make it so I can offer an amendment if possible? Okay, I'd like to make a motion then to instruct uh management to proceed with the planning of the avocado festival to include what Councilmember Perez mentioned in regards to possible rescheduling dates and that we also establish um a meeting with the delegation of Uruapan Mitrocan so that the mayor can have that opportunity to to meet with them and um evaluate everything they've got to contribute and what they've already contributed um to also include um the local attractions, right, for the like quality of life event. And I'm assuming that we'd be doing this either at the arena or at the Uni Trade Stadium.
Mayor, if I may?
That's my motion.
Okay, so.
Motion. Motion second.
We would like some, um, I guess more of a defined um process or a defined activity for the festival. Is it a business or combination business slash uh festival, like, you know, with booths and food and et cetera? So just to be able to ensure that we plan it accordingly, can you give us a little bit more information?
So if I may, mayor, um answer, Miss, what I have in mind and maybe Councilmember Perez has something else in mind. But I think that what we had originally planned was a budget for like music, have the people attend, have different booths set up of vendors and make it, you know, a family event um that um people could enjoy possibly on a Saturday. We can integrate what you mentioned of the industry maybe on a Friday and have that during the day. But I'm thinking that this is more geared towards making it a full blown festival. At one point, we discussed um entertainment for families, activities, if I'm I'm mistaken. There was discussion of music being provided and bands or something to that effect. Um, and making this festival an attraction, right? Or the mayor has repeatedly mentioned how we need something that identifies us, right, other than W B C A or other than um the current activities that that we have our sister cities, right? And when Councilman Perez brought this up, when Mission Produce opened and we had the governor and all these dignitaries here, I think that's when this idea came up and we had conversations, right, that we'd be the city with an avocado festival and, you know, we've got manuel bowl and different other activities. But this would be the city's initiated festival that would hopefully become an attraction for surrounding communities where we be um, you know, investor or economic um booth and hotel motel and so on and so forth and make it an actual attraction similar to W B C A and all the other activities that we already have established in our city.
Yes, thank you, and I'd be glad to make that contact. Just provide me with the information. Go ahead. So you made the contact already? Okay, will they be coming here or do we have to go over there?
Um, good afternoon, mayor, uh Council Eileen Ramos, uh Convention of Visitors Bureau. Uh, through the sister cities program, we have uh an agreement with the city of Uruapan. And so we in we're in conversations for them to come to the festival. Uh, but I also uh started a conversation about the the potential partnership for um the festival, the avocado festival. So the the international relations person for Uruapan um is has already been advised and he's uh going to have that conversation with the mayor of Uruapan. So we have, we have a sister city agreement with them. We um haven't um taken any additional steps, but we have already kind of informed them of.
All right, yes, but before we go, but for in order to for us to make that uh make that event happen, how would you structure it? Would they come here or would we go over there or how would we initiate this?
That that's what as Miss Cabeza said, mayor, we wanted a little bit more direction from council because uh and I know Mayor Potem um had wanted to speak. Um, if I may pass the microphone to Mayor Potem.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, uh so when we first started, the idea was more of a of an economic development uh focus, I believe, so that we can bring businesses here, highlight our port, uh make it kind of like a convention slash festival. So there was supposed to be the economics. So I love seeing the two economic development and C V B together because I think that this is going to be like a collaborative effort because we started getting into making the festival, um, the logistics weren't working out because if we have too many people for, let's say, we have a popular band and then everybody comes to the for the band, but then they're not there for like the purpose of the festival, which is to highlight the port and bring businesses down. And we had also talked about having it in October because of the weather. And October for this year is probably too soon, but I'm thinking if we keep it with the October, we should shoot for October twenty twenty-four. So that gives us enough time to really plan it out, make the connections, make the relationships and then get those, you know, businesses that want to come down here. and then get those, you know, businesses that want to come down here. You know, I've seen other port cities where they have people coming from all over the world to their ports. So we should kind of like maybe any of these companies that are interested in taking part of this nearshoring with the Mexi- with Mexico trend that's going on right now to kind of use. And it would be a way for us to boost the traffic in Columbia Bridge because, you know, I mean, that bridge is not utilized as much as it can be. So I think that if we shoot for October twenty twenty-four but make it more of a of an economic development slash, you know, festival for while they're here and then get the locals involved. But I think Laredo needs to boost our our like bragging points that we have for this fresh port that we have. So if council's okay with that, I'd like to add that as part of the motion if that's okay.
Mayor, I'll amend it if I could just redirect briefly.
Go ahead.
So yes, I think that ideally that was the intention and I think that the perfect model for us to follow, and I know Ms. Caballo has visited with us, Mr. Valdez, Eileen obviously, and and also Miriam, when we go to these communities, that's exactly what they've had set up, right? They've got several workdays where they bring all these logistic companies, produce, manufacturing companies, all into one big room, displaying their 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 products. And also those forwarding agencies trying to get information as to how they can utilize our ports, right, to bring in different produce, different items that are manufactured in Mexico. But then they also have after something that brings the community together through a festival or celebration. And I think that would be the model we want to follow, right? We want to have the municipality here. We want them to explain to our logistics and boarding agents what incentives they're willing to provide to them to start bringing in products from Mitrocan, from Uruapan. We can extend invitation to the governor of that state as well. And at the same time, also offer what services we have through our ports. And I think that this would be also a good task geared to the marketing individual we have at the port of entry because we are promoting the ports, right, and tie in airport as well, right? Have their marketing airport individuals involved because we also have that service made available to them, right? So let's bring CBB together for the festival and all those logistics and the model you all understand. But let's also bring in bridge, right, through the port, a a marketing person and also the airport, right? Because we've got to make it all into one and let's put them to work on this because they should be initiating these projects, not us, right? There's something that should be initiated through these marketing people who are there and should have the expertise and the ideas and not council-driven, in my opinion, so that we can have that momentum that we've built, right? We committed during budget time to creating these marketing positions and we really haven't seen much. And I understand the pandemic happened, but it's time to gear it up, right? And let's promote the ports so that we don't lose the ranking as the number one port in general because that's also an identifying factor for this gateway city.
Council, Mayor, council, if I may, I would also suggest if we're going to bring Uruapan, we also have an agreement with the state of Jalisco, with the Economic Development Agency for the state of Jalisco. And Jalisco, as of last year, has been approved to also be able to export avocado. So if we can bring them both in into the the event, that's a suggestion that we.
I forgot that staff had mentioned that as well in our brief conversation, Mayor. If I may, I'd like to amend it to also include the state of Jalisco with this festival and also establishing that line of communication with the mayor and council, not only with Uruapan, but with Jalisco and making sure we visit, understand their model, their perspective, their goals prior to the actual establishment of the actual festival and Councilmember Pedes's idea of making this maybe for twenty twenty-four or whatever it is that I know administrations change. And that's something also something very difficult to deal with that we've seen throughout the years that you've got cooperative mayors that want to do this because it also takes money on their end to invest. And then a new administration comes in and it pauses everything. And that's what ended up happening in our end, right? That it's something we discussed with the mayor, with former Mayor Sines, then we had the transition and we're trying to get back into gear in the pandemic. So I think Councilman Berpedes, if we allow staff to evaluate what the existing administration's calendar looks like, I know that the mayor from Uruapan right now is willing to cooperate and get this done as well as the state of Jalisco to their governor's office, then let's have them propose dates to us. And if it works, maybe we can have this this year.
And and also.
But let's let's work on the dates and see the options. All right?
And Mayor, can I add?
Yes.
So we do have a lot of of companies here like Mission Produce and and we have other, you know, businesses here that import and export avocados. I think it would be good to include them in this to see, you know, what their contacts look like and, you know, how they can contribute. I know that we already had sponsorships. I think we need to create sponsorship levels so that I know they had committed a couple, like, I think it's ten thousand each or something like that. So we want to, you know, capture that commitment and and include them in that if if that's also.
So part of the brief conversations that we had when we were putting together the concept of what this program could look like includes precisely that, you know, what type of sponsorships, the the format, which is pretty much what we are hearing as far as the structure that you would like to see. I guess what we can do is start working on some sort of a timeline with all the different, you know, aspects of what the this project might, you know, need in order to, you know, move it forward and, you know, take it from there. But yes, some of the conversations that we have had include precisely all of the different items and 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 ideas that you have been sharing.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just have one little quick thing, Mayor. The the fact that Jalisco would be invited, I just want to ensure for the people of Laredo that the drink of choice of Jalisco would be somehow integrated in a responsible way.
We didn't include that in our original.
Okay. The people, the people might appreciate that responsibly, of course.
Well, Mayor, if I may, along those same lines, the promotion of the much-invested Laredo signature drink that we had at one point that also involved tequila, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe reintegrating that into this festival. What was before you all, all of this council, Sam, I think?
We've had different.
What was it called?
We have Border Breeze and El Sol de la Reda. And before that, Ojo Rojo. So at one point before the pandemic, I'm sorry, before the pandemic, we were, we were pushing it in the different restaurants. We gave like table tents with the recipe. And so kind of like between the pandemic and our efforts with staff, our lack of staff, we put that project to the side. And we we actually brought back our old Ojo Rojo tried and true signature drink from the past. And so this is a drink that we use as a gimmick for events. And so, for example, we were in San Antonio, we had a booth, we're promoting Laredo. And this is one of the, one of the gimmicks that we use to to work with.
And if I'm not mistaken, we've also used it in Laredo Day in Austin, Laredo Day in Washington. So we need to reintegrate that into this festival as well, especially with the integration of Jalisco and their interests also and their market here with liquor.
Yes. And to Councilmember King's point, yes, liquor and alcohol is one of the commodities that has increased slowly but surely in the last, I want to say, seven years from imports from Mexico. So maybe there's an opportunity as well there.
All right. Okay. All right, motion?
Mayor, we seconded it already. I think that it would be important to get an update from this, maybe in like our August meeting.
Second.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, man? What about a salsa-making contest, too?
That's included. We we can update. We have salsas, we have cocktails, we have.
Awesome.
All of that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Number three?
Discussion with possible action to reevaluate the access points of the Murphy gas station at Mines Road in Killam and any other matters incident there, too. I keep bringing gas stations to council because we keep approving them and we are trying to fix Mines Road congestion and then we're approving gas stations. And the way that we're approving them, the trucks, the lots are small, the trucks are coming in and going out. We just expanded Killam intersection to add a fourth lane. But yet the way that this Murphy gas station is designed is that the trucks will use that fourth lane to make a line to get into the gas station because they offer cheaper gas than everybody else, even though the other gas stations have bigger lots. So they're basically using Mines Road as a parking lot or a waiting queue area to get into the line for the gas station. So I would like, right now, we have exit only on Killam and enter only on Mines Road. I'd like to reevaluate that if we can. I know TechStot is interested in assisting with this, but they need support from us to show that there is a problem there. So they, because I guess the damage is already done. But I'd like for for us to kind of reevaluate this corner and see what we can do to fix it because it's, we're going to end up having to babysit this corner. And it's like we're just babysitting, we're, we're trying to fix problems and then we're creating problems as we go. So that's kind of the issue, Mr. Penya.
Good evening. Robert Payne with Traffic Safety. So if you can show this screen. This is the corner with a Murphy's Express. And so this was approved in twenty twenty. And TIA was performed for this. And this is, this is the right turn lane improvement with acceleration lane. And so TechStot is aware and we're communicating with with TechStot. And they want to begin having that conversation with Murphy, USA Murphy Express. The fuel prices are very attractive here. For that reason, they're creating that that situation and we're all monitoring it on the on our traffic cameras. So I believe the first alternative that we have is, as you mentioned, we want to reverse the flow of the traffic into this facility and have them exit onto Mines Road instead of entering. And so that's, that's the idea. That's the only alternative we have right now. But we're going to begin conversations with 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 Murphy. Yes.
Well, but then the problem also is going to be that they're going to queue up on Killam to to get in line for the gas station from from there. So I think the bigger problem here is coming up with, and I've spoken to Legal about this as well, is that we have all these gas stations popping up on the Mines Road. And I think we need to come up with some kind of solution for that because if not, it's just going to continue to get worse and worse if we allow this at every single corner.
So so we have another gas station in America coming online pretty soon.
Yes, I know. And I know. And it's, it's an issue. It's an issue. It's a problem. So, you know, I know that I just have on the agenda to look at this corner, but I think from now until the next council meeting, I may have to bring another gas station reevaluation. I think that I'd like for council to support, you know, modifying, I don't know if it's within the scope, legal, but for us to modify our policy as far as accepting these gas station approvals from building, like require, making the lot requirements bigger or including some kind of traffic flow analysis before we give the the certificate of occupancy and the green light for them to go ahead and build. It's not that we don't need the gas stations, but it's creating an issue. We can't fix the congestion on Mines Road if we're shooting ourselves in the foot with this, the way that we're developing.
I understand. This is a TechStot roadway and so they're aware and they're familiar and they are approving these developments.
Well, actually, the people approving the developments are the city. And so TechStot is having to basically deal with whatever our planning and zoning commission approves.
No, they do. They do have a say-so. They do have a say-so. They they are evaluating the traffic impact analysis. This is a roadway. So they are concerned with the way that these facilities impact their road.
Did they approve this particular?
The driveway, yes, they did approve it.
They approved it. Okay.
Yes, we were in contact, Robert was in contact with them today because we asked for an access management plan, correct? And they are working on it. They did not have one at the time?
No, we're just looking at that now.
And I don't know if we're allowed to talk about it because it's technically, it's along the exact same issue, but it's a different gas station on the Loop and International. It's horrific. If you're, if you enter from the Loop going west and then you need, there's no way to exit without turning right on International and then U-turning at the Academy. Five P M. That is absolutely horrendous. So I don't know if this could also be talked about then or if you can comment on it now. If not, we can wait till afterwards. But I do agree, this issue is going to keep coming up. That one in particular, you have one way in and one way out, and the one way out is totally in the wrong direction where anyone would be going unless they happen to live in that neighborhood right behind it, so.
Legal, can we talk about that particular issue at this meeting right now?
You can relate to the the issue of congestion and alleviation, yes, but as far as like local plan, no, we can do that separately. But you brought this one particular location and and Dr. King's bringing up similar locations and issues.
Next, next meeting, should we just bring up a general item about it and discuss the?
So I guess there's a disconnect between, I guess, there's some kind of disconnect that needs to get hashed out. And I don't know exactly where the breakdown is or where it is. I've been trying to figure it out, but I haven't been able to identify exactly what the problem is. But we do have the Mines Road Coalition, the Traffic Coalition Management, if 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 it's okay to kind of address this issue through that coalition that was created. And it would also take care of growth all along their roadways because the Loop is also a TechStot roadway. So I guess we need to figure out what we can do to make sure that we're not having this problem.
That's a great idea. So we'll go ahead and do that and then bring you a status update on that.
I'd like to make that motion if council will support.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? The motion is to have management work through the coalition on the evaluation of this particular gas station and also the policies that we have for the creation of gas stations and working with TechStot to look at how it impacts traffic and access points and lot sizes and all of these issues that we have going on. Address that through the coalition and bring us back some 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 solutions. Yes, yes, go.
Would we be able to include the, there's a traffic and safety committee to look at the overall picture and and have them review some of this, have it go through there as well? I don't know if they join forces or have the Mines Coalition kind of update them, not not on the particular Mines Road issue, but on this overall city planning.
I would say bring some solutions and then send them to the committee for evaluation so that they can give it another set of eyes. Or if any of those committee members would like to be, give them the invite to participate so we can tackle it all in one spot instead of having it in multiple locations. So invite the Traffic and Safety Committee members to be part of this discussion.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes?
Motion for adjournment.
Councilmember, oh, hold on, point of order.
No, I'm sorry. You've got your item soon.
Councilmembers, you got a lot. Has an item.
My apologies.
Quite all right. The discussion with possible action to give property tax relief to homeowners under section eleven point thirteen N of the Property Tax Code, which allows a taxing entity to reduce the home sit exemption taxable value by a percentage anywhere between one to twenty percent and any other matters incident there, too. So I'm bringing this item forward for consideration since, from what I understood, we were not aware of this section under the tax code allowing taxing entities to voluntarily give property tax relief for reducing the home sit exemption. So yes, in the past, we have lowered our tax rate, but that's only due to the 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 fact that that we end up collecting more on taxes since property valuations keep rising every year. So I really do think that if there's any way to, one, see if there's something that we can do to control valuations from going up every year. But on another point, in further researching and looking at the Local Economic Area Report of what county, twenty-five percent of Laredo is impoverished and a hundred percent of people that are considered below the poverty line do not own a home and they are renters. So this doesn't, this doesn't help, help. So, this doesn't, this doesn't help, help this income bracket to say. And, and especially since once landlords get the, get their bill, it is passed straight through um to the renters. And most likely, um, rents will go up hurting working class families. So, while, while I do believe this section of the code is, is a promising opportunity for the city of Laredo to bring real property tax relief to our citizens, I also believe it's equally important to evaluate doing something that encompasses apartment complex, apartment complexes which are considered commercial real estate. Um, and then, and, but I would like to, again, open the um floor for discussion and hear the presentation from Ms. Dora.
Mayor? So we do, we do have a brief presentation for you on the effects that it would have. More importantly, what we're going through right now is a budget process. We've me, we're meeting with crucial departments to be able to come up with budget. There are many needs that, that there are. Uh, we, we're still not done yet and we're, um, I guess, going through them. In whatever is decided here tonight, uh, whether to proceed with a one percent, anywhere up to a twenty percent, you need to understand that, that um prices are going up for our materials and supplies, construction supplies, et cetera. And so there's a lot of needs for additional employees. Uh, we're, we've just gone through a co- compensation plan that we need to find. Health insurance costs are increasing. While it may seem that maybe a one percent equates to an X amount of money and, and Dora will show you where we are, the impact to the homeowner is minimal. A million dollars to us, as an example, for a one percent is significant. Because with one percent, for example, on debt, we can issue up to ten million dollars with debt if we were to issue debt. If we were, a million dollars to us um on a one percent equates to X positions, X projects, X programs. And so I just ask you to consider um looking at this carefully. While it does not have a significant impact on the property tax owner, it will have a significant impact on the city. And so with that, and, and we'll interact a little bit at a time. Dora will show you some of the numbers and um on, on this.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and, and council members. Dora Maldonado for the record, uh, for the tax department. Um, so yes, this is a presentation on the residence home state exemption. Uh, just want to clarify that this exemption would be only for those homeowners who own the property and reside on the property. This is not for businesses or for um mineral accounts or for any other property or non-homeset property. This is only for homestead owners, okay? And with that said, I would like to um start with um the section of the code that allows this exception, which is eleven point thirteen N uh the Property Tax Code. And I would like to read it to you. In addition to any other exemptions provided by this section, an individual is entitled to an exemption from taxation by taxing unit of a percentage of the appraised value of his residence home state if the exemption is adopted by the governing body of the taxing unit before July one in the manner provided by law for official, for official action by the body. If the percentage set by the taxing unit produces an exemption in a tax year of less than five thousand when applied to a particular residence home state, the individual is entitled to an exemption of five thousand of the appraised value. The percentage adopted by the taxing unit may not exceed twenty percent. So, in summary, um, the, it, it's a percentage and it's at one percent up to twenty percent. And there is a minimum exception of, uh, exception value of five thousand dollars, okay? So, analysis of the residence home state exemption. This levy that I'm presenting is based on the current tax of, uh, um, the current tax rate, I'm sorry, of fifty-seven cents for one hundred dollar value. The home state value is based on twenty twenty-three preliminary values provided by the appraisal district. So they provided to us a number of home state properties, which is at forty thousand six hundred ninety-seven for the city of Laredo. And I would like to um go over the valuations and how many accounts per, per values, right? So from, on a home state value from zero to ninety-nine, uh, uh, ninety-nine thousand nine ninety-nine, we have seven thousand five hundred and forty-six accounts. From a hundred thousand uh to below two hundred thousand is at fifteen thousand zero twenty-five. Two hundred thousand and below three hundred thousand is at eleven uh thousand four hundred seventy-nine. And um three hundred and below four hundred thousand is at four thousand three hundred. And four hundred thousand to below five hundred thousand is a thousand two sixty-two. And five hundred and over is at a thousand eighty-five. So as you can see, the majority of the home state value within the city of Laredo, it's between a hundred thousand and a hun- and um below two hundred thousand at fifteen thousand oh twenty-five. So the exemption percentage that we're presenting, like Ms. Cabello said, is at one percent and five percent. So, at one percent, we're looking at a levy loss of one million, uh, one point one million. And at a five percent, we're looking at a loss of two point four million dollars. And I would like to show you now the different uh valuations that we pers- uh, that we want to present to you at the one percent and the five percent. So, um, at the one percent, um, up to five hundred thousand dollars, um, it's, everybody would get the minimum, which is twenty-eight fifty, right? Uh, because for example, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value home, it's fifteen hundred dollars in value at the exemption of one percent. So we have to give them the minimum, right? Which is five thousand dollars or twenty-eight fifty in the tax amount, all right? At the five percent, um, we start with a hundred and fifty thousand. At five percent, that would be forty-two seventy-five. That would be the tax that the, uh, the taxpayer would, would, would receive, okay? The exemption amount, I'm sorry. And uh two hundred thousand, fifty-seven dollars at two fifty, seventy-one twenty-five. At three hundred thousand, eighty-five fifty. And uh three fifty, ninety-nine seventy-five, four hundred thousand, a hundred and fourteen dollars. And four fifty, one twenty-eight twenty-five. And at five hundred thousand, it would be one forty-two fifty. So anybody um at five percent earning, um, that has a value of a hundred thousand dollars or more, the, the exemption amount would be higher, right? Ba- based on the value of the property owner.
Dora? Yes, ma'am. Go back to the other?
Yes, ma'am.
So as you can see here, Mayor, if you look at a home state and, and I only asked you to do the one and five percent just for the sake of looking at numbers, we don't have an exact um percentage of what council may decide if, if you decide to go on a percentage of exemption. But if you're trying to help those who are in need, this is not the answer for them.
That's per year?
Per year.
So what is the answer?
The answer is, um, we, we had another item where legislation, our state is already doing something for them, where we have been capped at three and a half percent at most. When we, we used to have a cap of eight percent, something?
Eight percent.
Eight percent, where we used to be able to go all the way up. So all that can be increased is a three and a half percent at most. Yet we have inflationary costs that are so high. Um, I did ask our budget director to get, to sit down with Public Works just to show you a couple of things where we have oil prices, sand, sand. These are maintenance and operations for streets on the prices that are go, that are exponentially higher than they would have been. And so these are things that we're having to worry about and how are we gonna cover our daily operations? And if, if we're already working with, with the state of Texas to be able to uh control property taxes and yet if there's something else, it will significantly affect us.
May I be heard, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I first want to commend uh Ms. Maldonado for, for putting this data together. Very informative and it breaks it down very easily for the public to understand. And also I know Ms. Cabello always, every year has the difficult task of, um, she's a taxpayer herself and always advocating for what's best for the city. And she understands how this affects um our operations essentially. But, um, it works both ways, right? We can decrease the rate, increase home sit exemption and our, our end or UL's end, we can trim a lot of the fat as well to address that, right? And we've seen it, right? And I guess we'll see more of it during our budget time. However, I did want to also mention, and Dora correct me if wrong, we are providing current exemptions.
Yes, sir.
Right? We've increased those, the, um, I was looking for the word and I found it on, on webcam. We've increased the value limitation adjustment as well years past, right? We've been aware of this benefit for the community. I want to say maybe last year, the year before, um, former Mayor Sines brought it up and I think we brought the home state exemption, ten thousand dollars or something because that was the negotiation tool we used, I think, with management at that time. I think it was Ms. Cabello that the impact wasn't a lot, but we're providing something, right? And I think we increased it from like one thirty to one forty or one twenty of my collection. My recollection of thoughts is correct unless we didn't pass it because we had pushback from management. Um, I'm all in favor of what Councilmember Cigarro was proposing because we've been throughout the many years trying to champion this. And again, you know, I commend staff because it's very difficult, right? To um address this, that as policymakers, we see a big need for, but it is their job to make sure that they identify to us what would be the impact, right? And a very valid point Ms. Cabello brings up to where the impact to each individual taxpayer may be forty dollars in a whole year. When you divide that by twelve months, you're looking at being a savings sum under four dollars, three dollars and sixty cents, whatever it is, versus the add up um loss of revenue for the city and what services could be impacted or cut. But I've always said it, we've got to start somewhere and something is better than nothing. And even though we get criticism, oh, my discount, you know, wasn't even enough for a Whataburger or a McDonald's combo. Well, it's something, right? Because we've seen years, the city had gone for years without offering anything um until we started pushing for um rate decreases and then now what Councilmember Cigarro was proposing. Um, is this time sensitive or could we address this during budget time, um, during the hearings?
This is time sensitive, Mayor, and also it would take two readings, uh, a public hearing, I believe, to, the ordinance and then a final reading. So it must be adopted before uh July the first would be one of the things that we wanted to tell you. Another thing that we haven't told you is that preliminary, preliminary numbers for our tax rate is probably going to decrease anywhere from four to five cents this coming year. So that is a challenge to us. Though our valuation um may be a different story, but certainly our tax rate is going to be uh decreasing by about four or five cents.
May I read it, Rick, ma'am?
Yes.
So, um, although I, I think that's a great idea, I think that with what you're mentioning, um, you're recommending we hold off then and maybe proceed with what the mayor has recommended for next year and start exploring this for the, for the following year?
Most definitely.
I'd like to make a motion to accept um Ms. Cabello's recommendation.
All right. Motion second.
Okay, yeah, um, I have a, I just have a follow-up question, um, or several. Um, the, so if, if, if we did move forward with the percentage that affects the rate that management is asking us to approve the tax rate that comes?
The tax rate would be decreased regardless. I, I, I'm not sure if I understand the question, Mayor, but, but our tax rate regardless of, um, because we need to stay within the three and a half percent growth rate in valuations, it will come down by three, four or five cents. Um, preliminary numbers are telling us that.
And there's, that, to answer your question, uh, Councilwoman Cigarro, uh, it would be in addition to the, um?
Right, yes. Do we know how much revenue the city is bringing in from last year? Or is that something that we can, we can um ha- look at and bring back during budget? Um, like what is, what, like, what is that number in, in a percentage? Is it four percent, eight percent more or less? Do we know?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was your question?
How much revenue is the city bringing in?
For, for this coming year?
This coming year.
Versus last year?
Last year. And then this, the question would be asked for this?
About three and a half percent more than last year, right? Uh, what we're looking at?
The only growth that we can have is three and a half percent more.
Because we can only remember we, we have a revenue cap at three and a half, so we cannot go higher than that.
Yet we have increases in personnel because our comp, we have other fire entities, um, contract obligations that we have for increases on an annual basis, based contractually. Uh, we have health insurance costs that are going up. We have chosen supplies that are going up. So we have quite a bit of things that we need to balance out based on, based on that.
We have preliminary numbers for budget that we're looking at. Uh, expenses going up is about six and a half million dollars overall. Uh, one of the challenges that we?
Percentage wise, though, three and a half?
Six and a half million dollars more.
Ten dollars, one percent.
Yes, in expenses. And, and the challenge, like Ms. Cabello mentioned earlier, in meeting with the different departments, the challenges have been the inflation. Uh, the departments have, basically have no growth on their line items with the exception of what we call no control. No control being personnel, uh, vehicle maintenance, fuel, contractual services. So a lot of the contracts that the departments have, because of the, the employee issue, have gone up. So that's what the departments are struggling with right now and that's why we have the additional expenditures that we're gonna have to work with and balancing, which we are in the process of doing as we speak, so.
All right.
May I? Um, if we're looking at property tax relief, we talk about that in, in the sense that people whose valuations went up are looking at the point five seven rate they were playing, paying last year and they see their tax bill going up dramatically. Higher valuation, the tax rate's point five seven. People fear a, a much higher tax bill. But in reality, what will happen is that point five seven cents is going to come down. And as much as it's, it, it looks great that the city council can approve a lower tax rate, we're actually obligated to do that because the state of Texas does not allow the city of Laredo to have any revenues higher than three point five percent growth. And you're telling us now that our expenses are going to exceed this three point five percent, that three point five percent growth. Our budget is gonna have to adjust, that's just the reality of living under a budget. You have to adjust the budget because even though we will, we will collect three point five percent more, the expenses naturally have grown over the three point five percent.
Yes, Mayor, so it is our obligation for charter to be able to have um revenues equal expenses. And so we have to come back to you with a balanced budget regardless. So we'll have to cut in, in, in different areas um where we can.
Right.
I, I would just like to ask, when we're looking at the expenses now for a brand new festival, unless it was already budgeted, tho- that festival wasn't necessarily eh, planned or included in the current budget. So now if council adds items, expenses, we have to look at that with that three point five percent cap that we have as far as managing our budget. And I only mention that because you're gonna come to us with a tax rate that is already lower. People will already get relief from these higher taxes that they are calculating on their own based on the increased valuation. And we just need to be careful that we don't undercut and lower it too much. We wanna provide tax relief to the citizens, but we also have to understand that big budget items like the wage um allocations that we did, uh, the Siegel Study and other inflation that we need for maintenance and repairs, things that you were mentioning, don't get dramatically undercut.
One, one of the items that we're absorbing this year as well is the homeless shelter. We have a, a half a million dollars coming into the budget for that. Uh, we have a detox that, the detox that has, it has funding for this year, year one, uh, but it's contingent on getting the grants coming in moving forward. If not, General Fund will have to step in and, and cover any shortfalls in the meantime that we're gonna have in there. So for every, every penny that we lose in, in Texas, uh, it's about one point seven million dollars that we lose of revenues coming in, which is part of the tax relief that is already built by the state and, and controlling that. So that's a, that's an estimation of what we're gonna be losing for those potential three to five cents in that, that is projected this coming year. So, so you're absolutely right, we need to be careful that we don't anticipate or, or try to cut those uh property taxes coming in because the property taxes is one of our, it, it is the biggest revenue source that General Fund has.
All right. Go ahead.
So just wanna, you know, point out that we're capped at three point five by the state, but inflation's at six, seven, eight percent. So we're already gonna have to cut and we, you know, we know, we know what it's like to, to live in a budget because most of us aren't, you know, wealthy, right? So, um, we work within our budget, but we're already gonna have to face cuts next year just because of the fact that we can't grow more than the three point five. So if we're cutting more, we're looking at the chart, we're seeing that it disproportionately goes towards, like, percentage-wise towards like the wealth. percentage wise towards like the wealthier home values, right? So I don't think that's gonna be a solution for what we're having here at the city. And then we just had to raise rates on our housing uh, units a couple of items ago because of other issues. So yeah, you always wanna be the council person that lowered rates or lowered this or lowered that, but it's not sustainable for us at at the, you know, long term. And when we're talking about avocado festivals, we're not talking about spending money for fun, we're talking about investments, economic development tools attracting growth to our cities. So there's a difference between an expense and an investment. And I think that we're trying to shift towards investment versus, you know, just spending money just to kinda like continue to be in the red. So um, you know, I think that this particular issue, what we have, the motion on the table is, for me, I'm in favor of that.
All right, call for the question.
And um, Mayor, may I, may I be heard?
Go ahead.
Um, I would just, I'd like to add that again, um, I understand that um, we have the motion on the table and perhaps it be amended or to add, um, just directing management to, again, um, looking into this process for next year, but also uh, um, on evaluating how we can address the lower income bracket to which are rent, the renters um, in and the, I guess, the commercial real estate um, regarding apartments. And that way, we offer real tax relief for everyone in our community.
Okay, call for the question.
I I just wanted to clarify, could we include, if if you'll accept the amendment, um, some type of feasibility to look at options, to see what what makes sense, what can be evaluated?
Can I make the motion, I'll accept your amendment? Um, I did have a question though on Councilmember Sigarro's amendment. I do own apartment conflicts myself, is there a conflict if I vote in favor or accept her amendment for tax relief for apartment owners? And if that's the case, then I'll ask for it to be a separate motion so I won't be part of the vote.
Right. Mayor, the recommendation that Councilmember Nelly Stowe is making, the only thing I can think of is changing legislation at this point.
I mean, I don't think we can legally provide additional tax relief to multifamily commercial properties?
No.
I don't think so either, but I'm, what what would be a process to even
Because there, yeah, there's nothing that locally that we can do that I know of. And it would, it would be a um, up in the area where we would have to.
Call for the question.
By, we're asking for legal clarification, right now you
Right now it's still in general terms, I I do not see a direct conflict for you, Councilmember Torres. And I guess you're talking about tax credits and such that may be explored by.
Okay, I'll accept your amendment, Councilmember Sigarro, for um, as recommended by legal.
Mayor.
All right.
Same thing for me, is it okay?
Yes, right now it's just, you're speaking in general terms and
When it comes back and there has to be a vote, do we have to abstain from it?
If it comes to some kind of direct conflict that arises, then yes, but at this moment, I I just see it just in general terms, I don't see a conflict for I, anyone right now. Just because you own the complex.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just, what, a point of order? Just to clarify, what is the, what is the motion that we're voting on? Because it sounds as if what is, what the wording is in the item isn't necessarily what the motion is. So if we could just have some clarification on the final motion?
It's to explore the feasibility of implementing this in next year's budget and creating a feasibility study and with the apartments also.
Just in terms of how do we, how does it benefit everyone in the community?
They'll come back with recommendations, a couple of options, council will consider, and then you all vote eventually.
I believe that the Councilmember, the Sigarro is asking for how it benefits renters, not so much
Yeah, not so much apartment complexes, just how does, how do we, how does it benefit the
So, Mayor, point of order.
Point of order, I think we're all talking at the same
I think for For clarification purposes, Mr. Secretary, my motion was to accept um, the acting city manager's recommendation to not do anything now because of timing issues, that we bring this back and that through the mayor's task force establishment and the different organizations that Councilmember Elisa Sigarro has mentioned, that we address everything, right? And that legal further evaluate what are the possibilities to provide tax relief, not only to homeowners, but to everyone across the board um, in the community, right? That's, that was the motion, with all the amendments I accepted. No, no feasibility.
It's just a feasibility, uh, not a study.
You're saying no? Okay, I'll, so no, no study.
Let's address the council, please. Address the chair.
Mr. Mayor, so following the acting city manager's recommendation, no study.
Hopefully, somebody else, go ahead.
I don't know if there's a motion, but I would motion um, to table this item, that would be the wisest thing to do, my opinion.
Motion, second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do it. Motion passed. Should have done that at the beginning.
Discussion with possible action on waiving the fee for Fourth of July celebration events at our city pools and waiving the fee for the usage of the water slides at Sisters of Mercy Water Park and just the weekend operating hours of the pool and and any other matters, instead there are two co-sponsored by Councilmember Alberto Torres to you. So the first thing will be the Fourth of July events, um, I don't want for it, for it to come the day of the celebration for for any of the parks and we're dealing with uh, charging the the admission to the people when it's a, it's free to the public. And the other one would be waiving the fee of the usage of the water slides. I believe Sisters of Mercy Water Park is the only pool that charges the slides. I've been to North Central past, I believe it was last summer, and I was not, I was charged the admission, but I wasn't charged the slides. However, when you come, when you come into the Sisters of Mercy, they charge you the admission, which is one dollar per child, two dollars per adult, plus the usage of the slides will be two fifty extra. Mind you, we also charge for the people to use the splash pad when all the splash pads around the city of Laredo are free admission. I understand that it's inside the facility. I understand that it's inside the facility, but uh, I would like to work with something that one, remove the fees for the slides, which, because if you're already paying the admission, if you're already paying the admission, then why would you have to pay for the, for the water slides? Maybe it's a, it's an amenity that the park has to offer for the people. Now with this heat, I wanna have the consideration that the people need this facilities more than ever. We're heating a hundred and sixteen degrees per day, a hundred, the lowest has been a hundred and ten. The lowest has been a hundred and ten degrees and we have to make it more feasible for for the people, especially those in South Laredo, to be able to enjoy those um, water parks that we have to offer for them. I don't know if we can work something out of how we, how we can help out this this residents of Laredo to to, you know, not not have that extra fee when it comes to to that water park.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council, City Councilmembers. So uh, Councilwoman, so you're saying that to waive the, to waive the fee, because you you go into the, to the splash pad, but if you wanna get into the, into the, I'm sorry, in into the pool, if you wanna get into the slides and all that, that that fee right there is is what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. It is an ordinance, okay, we we can go back and revisit that so that we can, if allowed by you all, so that we can take that ordinance off. This was done, I know some years back, um, and just included all in one, all in, just in the entry fee, right? All the, all the other pools don't have that, so we just get one fee and they use, and they use the pool. Now, the only way it would change, we would have to bring it back to, for being as a, an amendment to the ordinance so that we would take off that fee that was brought back or anything like five or six years ago.
So then my motion would be to bring back the ordinance and amend it and for, to remove that that uh, extra cost of the water slides, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other one would be the, how can we work something out with the weekend operating hours? We're opening, um, I I know, I don't know the rest of the parks, but this one specifically from two to seven P M. Uh, Saturdays and Sundays. How can we do it to maybe open it from eleven? The lines, and I invite anybody that that is willing to drive by on a Saturday and a Sunday, the lines for the Sisters of Mercy curves all the way either to T-Mobile right across the street or to uh, the PNC Bank.
Right. We need to second, we need to second the first motion.
I'll second this first motion.
And uh, the, 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 the lines are crazy every single weekend.
Weekend.
And uh, I know the city of Laredo is doing everything, I know you, Coach, and I know Parks and Recs are doing everything possible to accommodate, but we get to a point where there's the end of the line coming into, you know, the gate when it's time to come in and they, they cannot access it anymore because it's already seven P M.
Right. If I may, Mayor and Council, if I can add to that, so on Fridays and Saturdays is the busiest day for rentals. That we have these big rentals, this is a big revenue for us to commit. So normally we have two hour rentals or three hour rentals. So that means that if we close the pool at seven, the rental that, people that come and rent the facility for big parties or whatever, then they come in at seven thirty and they have up to nine thirty or up to ten or ten thirty. So we stop at seven o'clock on Friday and Saturday because that is the main one that everybody wants to rent, which is good, right? Now, we can start, start earlier, uh, I I, you know, we can move it up to, we, to the eleven o'clock per se so that we can extend the day of the uh, you're right, and you're right, I was there a couple of weeks ago and there was a lot of people.
It's crazy packed and it's every single weekend, like I said, I invite anybody that wants to, to just stop by and see. It's beautiful because it gets used to its capacity every single time, but I feel bad for those that are in line for so many hours, yet they get to the, to the entrance and they can't go in.
Yes, ma'am, so um, I I do see that we can move it over to eleven o'clock per se. It just, we have now, we're booked pretty much all the way up to August with the rentals, so it would be hard for us to push them back so that we were able to get revenue uh, with all those, with all the rentals for the next couple of months. But towards, I mean, on the, on the front end, we'll, we can, we can make it work.
So we do it from eleven A M. to seven P M., it won't affect any of the rentals, correct?
No, no, ma'am.
No, that's fine by me, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah.
As long as we give them those extra hours so that they can enjoy the facility.
Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, really quick, and that, that won't affect your uh, budgeted part time monies in reference to pushing part timers to work earlier on Fridays and Saturdays. I just wanna make sure you're covered.
Yeah, no, we're, luckily, we're blessed that we got a full staff now of part timers and full timers with lifeguards. So two years ago, that was another story, but we, we do have now a full staff of uh, of part timers and full timers so that we were able to, you know, those two hours will not, uh, will not affect.
Third tier, Coach, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Um, what was the cost, do you remember what the overall cost of, was of this facility?
What was the overall build? Councilwoman, I'm not gonna, I was not here when that was, when that was being, when that was built. Uh, I don't know if you, if somebody, uh, maybe man, somebody remembers. I was, I was not here when it was being built, I would, I wouldn't have an idea how much it cost. It wasn't phases, I know it was the pool first and then it went to the, and then it went to the slide and then just recently, we just built a splash pad. But I I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know what the facility
Do you have a cost?
Go ahead.
We're, we're trying to get those numbers for you now. I know that we had a lot of difficulty with the construction company and so we had to go through various construction companies at the time. Do you have the number, Ramon?
I, Honorable Mayor, I'm the City Council, I can pull it out here in a minute or two. I remember the uh, water park was probably in the range of uh, over a million dollars. Uh, and the splash pad was in the range of three hundred thousand dollars. So those are the uh, more or less the numbers, I can pull them out right now.
We do have some requirements for staffing, have we talked about that? The staffing requirements?
So whenever we do open in full capacity, we, by, by T M L insurance purposes, we have to have thirteen lifeguards. Thirteen lifeguards and one head lifeguard for the amount of people to, we can allow three hundred people per, at at a time. What we do, uh, and just for, being that we try to get everybody in, we give everybody an hour and a half intervals and we give them bans so that that way everybody can come in at an hour and a half, hour and a half, hour and a half. It's a good problem to have because it's used and it's, you know, and and, you know, it's great to see kids out there and families, right? But we, we do, we, like, uh, Mr. Sario said that we do have a minimum of, well, we have to have thirteen lifeguards working when we open at full capacity. Fourteen in total with the head lifeguard.
So why, I, I think it's a good idea to streamline it and maybe not have every single amenity charged separately. I do believe that there should be some cost, it sounds as if there's enough public interest. If the lines are always there, that that people are willing to pay that amount. And um, so I, we just need to be cognizant that there is a lot of cost to running this facility.
Yes.
Find something fair, but also not, not take away all of the revenue that it's building because it does then fund these necessary lifeguards.
Yes, go ahead.
And I understand you, Councilmember, but when you come to other facilities and and city of Laredo and other parks, that if, this is the only park where you, where they, they charge the admission plus any amenities inside and it's all, and it's in South Laredo. It's not in North Central Park, it's not in any other park, it's just South Laredo. Now, we're getting the revenues, as Coach is telling you, by uh, the renting of the facility for private parties. How much do we charge for private parties?
So if if for the, if you rented out for the three, for the three hours, it's about a thousand dollars. If you rent for two hours, it's about a hundred dollars.
That's a way to get the, that's a way to get the, the revenue.
With everything included, of lifeguards and everything.
And it's, the only thing here is being fair across the board when it comes to other facilities not being charged for the, for the, for the water slides. So, I mean, it it, it's to benefit residents of of the city of Laredo, specifically those that live in, in South Laredo and to make it fair across the board for all the parks to be the same. If we're not charging it in another park, why are we charging it in South Laredo?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, I do agree, Mr. Gomez, that um, it does need to be streamlined, that there should only be one charge for, for families. My concern is that we don't have zero charges because I do believe that, you know, the budget needs to be reflective of the amount of operating costs that there is. But I, I, I do agree with a Councilmember that, that putting out or isolating separate amenities for charges just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that was, that ordinance been for about five or six years, ever since they opened it, so we, you know, we can go back and amend it and keep it a reasonable.
Okay, so I have the motion for, oh, that was second by Councilmember Torres, for the, the Fourth of July, remove the fee for the, the water slides and land for the Fourth of July celebrations across city of Laredo. But then what about the motion for the operating hours? Is it a separate motion, is it the same one?
Removal of the fees for the slides?
So we voted that one and then bring
But it was to bring back an ordinance, I think Coach mentioned an ordinance to amend it. So I don't know if you're asking to remove the fee right now?
No, to bring back, to bring back the ordinance, yeah.
It'll be two readings, right?
Yes, it has to go, I
It'll be two readings to amend the ordinance, so you're talking about August.
So how can I do it, uh, zone to remove the fees right now?
To be honest, Mayor, we, we research this, if I may, real briefly, Council. Fees are uh, are granted through, you know, public uh, hearings and and ordinance. So we, uh, legal staff and I scrubbed through to see if you all have the power, to be honest. I know it's been, possibly been done in the past, but council does not have the power to waive fees that were passed through a public hearing in the past. Now, unit trade in that ordinance, uh, you all granted city manager the power to waive those fees and parking fees and, and control fees are waivable as well. So our recommendation through staff uh, is for you all to uh, create possibly an ordinance to allow city manager to waive fees in certain circumstances and in this particular case, allow uh, city manager uh, to waive these fees and just ratify. So that, that, that'd be the cleanest way so we can be square going forward.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So even if if we bring back the ordinance, we have to wait, what is it, till we have a July thirty first meeting, which is summer will be over by then?
Right, but if if you incorporate this ordinance to allow city manager to waive these fees and you'll ratify at that later time. That way this gets accomplished and on the books it will be legal. So you create an ordinance to allow city manager to uh, waive fees when, when he or she deems fit and in this particular instance, because it's coming up, you're willing to ratify that decision.
Okay, then um, my motion would be what Zone just recommended, which is care, management the, the the authority to to waive those fees when necessary, because if we wait till July thirty first, we're, we're done with summer.
All right, so how would that motion read?
Wait, are we, we're gonna make an ordinance right now?
No.
No, we're just giving the authority to, to management.
And then to.
How's that gonna get it done by July?
Director, Chairperson.
Mayor, Mayor, I don't understand how that's gonna get this.
And by July, by the Fourth of July, I don't. Because.
No, the Fourth of July is just an event.
Right, right, I just don't.
The, the removal of the fee for the water slide, which is an amenity that is offered by the, by, which is, to me, it should be covered with admission, not as in a.
The solutions Zone just gave, just.
He said it solves this problem for Fourth of July, but I don't see how.
Is that management, if I may, Mayor, management would waive the fees and you would ratify.
Once the ordinance is approved later on, no?
But it's, can't go back in time.
And then we will also come back with an ordinance in amending the fees at a later date.
So that's how your motion.
All right. Go ahead.
Is this the management in a position to?
Abide by whatever we say as councilmembers?
Well, we have to follow the, the laws.
It's an ordinance, so we have to bring back the ordinance. So for now, what we're doing is waiting for the Fourth of July event celebration across City of Laredo and bring back the ordinance to ratify it and remove the charge of the water slides for that facility.
And that is the legal above board way of doing it.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, we haven't been doing it correctly in the past.
All right.
Okay.
So how does the motion read after?
Motion to do whatever Zone said. Over the question.
To allow uh, City Manager to waive fees, uh, any fees uh, when necessary and in particular for this Fourth of July event, to ratify uh, the waiver of those fees.
May I add? Go ahead.
I think that to address Councilor Cigarroa's concern, um, which I think it's a practice that I know previous managers, Ms. Cavellio would practice it as well, um, would be that once you all do waive something, you all have legal sign off on it anyways, right? So, I mean, you've got that two-pronged test and checks and balances, right? And if it's in the ordinance, then, you know, legal's approving of it, manager is good to go, which is an example of what was used with, with Zone on things like these, right? So, I don't know if that addresses your concern. I know that what you're trying to say is all it takes is for a council member to pick up the phone and tell the City Manager, I want you to waive X fee, but maybe in the ordinance, it has to come to council and council must vote as a majority to instruct the City Manager to do such thing. I don't know, right? So that we're aware of what's being waived.
How would it go?
And I think that's what we've been doing anyways. So.
To be honest.
For City Manager to provide a report. What we could do is in this ordinance, have City Manager provide a report of what he has waived on a quarterly basis or monthly basis of some sort.
For ratification purposes.
For, well, not ratification, just information.
Oh, informational, informational purposes.
All right, Councilwoman, I think she wanted to speak. Okay, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm concerned that it defeats the purpose of creating the ordinance. I think as a body, we have to approve, you know, we meet every two weeks or at least once a month. By charter says we have to meet once a month. So, um, I think it would be important for us to pre-plan this so that we can get it on the agenda like this item was. Um, but then, oh, as a body, agree to waive those fees and then allow, you know, whatever needs to happen. But I don't think management should be waiving fees and then bringing it back to us later on, because then it, where does it end? So, I think for this one, I think we should go ahead and approve this how we're, how we're motioning.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't agree with, with letting management just waive fees because then it's just gonna add to the bigger issue of, you know, revenue loss.
Just to be, be clear, uh, that, that's one option, is to uh, waive these fees, but in order to do so, you have to do it through ordinance and, and it takes, you know, some time to do, but you're willing to, to ratify it if, if management goes ahead and waives these fees in July. So, just going forward, if, if you want to uh, waive fees on case-by-case basis, you may have to, to have that, you know, three readings for an ordinance. So, uh, again, I, I'm not uh, uh, proposing it or pushing for it, I'm just saying that uh, when we looked at all the other ordinances, there are instances where management uh, is allowed to waive fees, like unit trade, parking fees, animal control fees. So that's one option is to allow, you know, that unilateral uh, power or you can keep it case-by-case basis, it just takes some time.
Well, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If we're gonna mo, I mean, and I'm not against creating some kind of policy like that, but I just, I, I, I think that it should, still should be council-driven, right? So, you know, they can do that at the request of the majority of council. Can you add that to it or not?
Yeah, you can, you can create that in your ordinance, yeah.
Right, uh, because I think that would be a good caveat to add and it would be a good compromise.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Motion.
Motion.
In a second.
Favor? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed.
Now, my motion is for the adjusting the operating hours for the Sisters of Mercy Water Park from eleven A M to seven P M, as suggested by Coach Gomez.
Counsel, which, which take?
Um. Seasonal hours.
That's your second, the other motion?
That's my, that's my other motion.
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Discussing with possible action on the status update of a memorandum of understanding between Laredo College and the City of Laredo regarding the recreational facilities and any matters incident there to co-sponsored by Mayor Paul Tempanes Apetis. So I know, I know for a fact, there's a M O U that's been, uh, I don't know if it's been sitting around or, or uh, if we've been working on it, but I feel LC is a great uh, partner to the city and, and I want to, want to know what, what's going on with that memorandum as uh, we do have LC College South, which uh, we have LC, LC College South subdivision, we have Isla, Isla Los West subdivision and even Santa Rita, that they can, that if we become, if we come, if we come into an agreement with an M O U with them, we can always use uh, whatever they have to offer in their facility, which is um, the, the courts and, and the playground and all that stuff. I know we don't have a pool, but we also, we do have one in, in uh, in uh, other parts of the city. So, what's the status on that and how can we move forward to it and not have it standing there?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So staff has been working very hard on, on working with Laredo College on amenities. We started off um, as a request by Councilwoman Cigarroa, uh, Lisa Cigarroa, to be able to bring something to the east, uh, west end side of, of Laredo. And so staff, about two weeks ago, um, semi-negotiated um, various things such as the courts, tennis courts, softball, softball fields, swimming pool and multi-purpose um, area, three multi-purpose areas. Um, for a monthly basis, they came in at about five thousand dollars. This is something that we wanted to um, see if we could put in, because it's an operational expense into the budget. It would be a lot less expensive in putting these amenities versus building tennis courts in this area, building a rec center, et cetera. So now that you're telling me, uh, that, that councilmember's saying to be able to do something in the south, we'll certainly go back and ask for that request and see what other update that we can have on, on bringing that additional, those additional amenities forward to the south side. And so we'll go back and.
If I may.
Yes.
Uh, speaking to Dr. Minita Ramirez, she is very much in, in favor of using the south, uh, the south campus so that we, there's, uh, there's eight tennis courts, uh, softball, baseball field and two multi-purpose fields and a play scape. So she's, I spoke to her this afternoon and she's very much in favor of, we just need to go back and sit down. It's in the legal, in the legal phase, so hopefully we can move this along and uh, hopefully we, you know, hopefully we can put it into the budget for October the first of this coming year. So, we have been really, really working with LC and I appreciate them also for helping us and working. Like, uh, like Ms. Cavellio said, it's better than building all these rec centers and pools and all that stuff because we can just use, use the facilities that they currently have. All right.
So then we would just be adding the LC, LC South, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. And last one, discussion with possible action to assist family special and foster an adoption agency with their first annual cars for a cars car show at Unit Trade Stadium to benefit children under foster care in Webb County and any matter incident there to co-sponsored by Councilmember Alberto Torres Junior. So basically, I got reached out, all they're asking is for the parking lot of Unit Trade and this is to, to benefit uh, this foster kids and uh, trying to help them find families and a stable home. I am asking uh, management to see if we can help them out and anybody else that wants to be involved uh, with anything else that they need other than the parking. Um, it's basically a car show, there's nothing else into it, anything else or like uh, I believe they were just asking for that and if possible, the restrooms.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I managed on the request, this is waiving of fees for the parking lot, uh, usage of bathrooms. We'll prob, they will probably need security because it's something very important. Traffic control, police department, is that already taken care of by them also? Uh, I just want to make sure that we are very clear because these are liability issues in addition to them needing insurance. So is all that going to be covered? It's not just so much the parking lot, but I just want to make sure that we know what we're going to um, commit ourselves to.
They didn't get into detail about it, but we can always schedule an meeting and see what, what is it that, that they haven't come into an agreement with them. Uh, what I was asked uh, to help with was the parking lot and the bathrooms.
So that would require some liability insurance for us, Mayor? Um, if that is the only thing, then we would also just ask for uh, for them to commit to the insurance for the parking lot. If we would waive the parking lot, they would still need uh, insurance. That would be the only thing.
All right.
Now, one other point, Mr. Mayor, I'mma, um, the restrooms are under construction. Um, are they available? Because we have to rent porta-potties and washing of the hands, uh, washing stations.
That's true.
Because of the restrooms being unavailable and that was recently.
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Ramon Chavez, City Engineer. That's correct, the stadium is still under renovation. Uh, we have been working uh, together with the contractor. We've been able to accommodate the, the baseball team uh, right now. Uh, there's a section of restrooms that on the third base side that right now i- is under uh, uh, repair. Uh, we do have the ones on, on first base that are uh, ready and they've been utilized. Uh, the other thing I was gonna ask is the date of, for the event also, to make sure that we uh, work around the calendar of the, the, if it's available, correct? Yes.
So John Orfila was taking care of that, is, is he in the room so that he could allow us to see if it's available or not?
Mr. Mayor, while Mr. Orfila uh, makes his way over to the chamber, may I be heard briefly?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So the liability insurance is something we request from all these nonprofits or people who are leasing our parks and our facilities to ensure that the liability is limited. Um, I have a question, I know I co-sponsored this for um, supplemental agenda purposes. Um, will there be any alcohol, Councilmember Rodriguez, or vendors or anything?
It's a family event, um, I don't know about vendors, but I know uh, no, no alcohol will be it, uh, will be available, but uh, I just, I just feel, we cannot put, like, we can't, we, we, we're helping out these kids that do not have a home, that do not have families, so let's try to make it an easy way possible for them. I'm not saying bypass any ordinances that we have, but uh, right now, we don't have a date as, as what I, what, what they were talking to me, they don't have a date, they're just trying to get the, they were, they were trying to get the facility, just the parking lot more than anything and the restrooms.
So, may I be direct, briefly, Mayor? What we've done in the past, because we've helped nonprofits and I recall us doing this a lot, um, is that sometimes when it's organizations like these, we usually sometimes help them by sponsoring the liability insurance. So I don't know if you, that's something you'd want to consider? I mean, because we, we can't legally waive insurance, right, Ms. Cavellio, for any event, private or public?
So in the past, Mayor, uh, what has been done is uh, through promotional funds, some councilmembers have been able to do that. Sometimes it's as small as three hundred dollars for insurance for the day depending on the activity. Um, and so it, it is fairly affordable for, for them to be able to purchase it or for the councilmembers to sponsor it.
And the city could host, Mayor, if I may, the event, right? By sponsoring the insurance or the extra layer of coverage that being allowable expenditure, Mr. Zone?
All right.
To approve it and to explore how you can help them, I guess, and change it to availability.
So, um, also, we don't have an update on the restroom, Mayor, so we're waiting for Mr. Orfila to come in to see if that's the case or porta-potties will have to be rented, but then we'll work it out with the entity involved.
Okay.
And hand washing.
Right there.
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Ramon Chavez, City Engineer. The restrooms are available, they're, they're on, on first base. Yes, on first base, so we've, we've uh, even though we've had games and everything, everything's been operated, we.
So we'll need security because the facility will be open?
Right.
To be able to escort them and not wander off to other areas.
Um, uh, what if I, I uh, work along with, with Webb County and uh, as one of the constables to see if they can uh, help us with, with the police presence, with anything for, for that day?
That would be acceptable, Mayor.
For sure.
So my, motion to, to see what way possible we can help them, if it's by uh, using promotional funds, but just have a, have a, a way of sponsoring uh, this event for these children.
All right, motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Is that it?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Waiting adjourn? Date will five A M, six twenty twenty-two.